Call the Budget Work Session, June 6, 2025, meeting to order. Members of the Board, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Having here none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
We have a motion, any further discussion? Having here none, all in favor, vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it, the motion's approved. Item number one, swearing in ceremony with the Honorable Deborah Barker.
Mr. Long? He will join me at the podium. Get you to hold this with your right hand. Raise it, put your raise. Wait a minute, is that hand on the Bible raised right? Now get it right for me. Do you, Donald Long, solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
Yes.
And do you further, Donald Long, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
Yes.
And finally, do you, Donald Long, further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
I want you to execute this.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You are very welcome.
Congratulations, Commissioner Long.
Well, thank you, Chairman.
Do you flip your name?
I can flip it around.
Open for business.
All right, item number two, 2025, Commissioner Committee Assignments. Members of the Board, you have your committee assignments in front of you. Really, this is pertaining to Commissioner Long. Commissioner Long, are you in agreement with those committee assignments assigned?
Yes, we can, that'll be fine.
Okay.
We can dispatch later.
All right, so that is, so that has been completed. And item number three, Resolution Appointing Review Officers, Michelle Solomon.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. In front of you or in your packet from previously was a resolution appointing review officers. North Carolina General Statute 47-30.2 requires the Board of County Commissioners in each county by resolution appoint a person or persons to serve as a review officer to review each plat before it is recorded to certify that it meets statutory requirements for recording. Since the last resolution was approved on October 7, 2024, there have been substantial changes in county personnel that necessitates a new resolution. It is my recommendation that we amend this resolution.
Members of the Board, you've heard the proposal by the Clerk, is there any questions? Having here none, do I have a motion to approve such resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion, any further discussion? Having here none, all in favor, vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it, motion's approved.
Thank you.
Item number four, Revenue Projections, Russell Jones.
Morning.
Morning.
At the last meeting, I know the Board asked me to present some revenue projections, and I think you're asking for future years, and I think it's, the question's more emphasized on what the state appraised properties might look like in the future. Is that the issue that I need to address this morning? Or what is the question I need to?
I think it was me I asked, and it was more of maybe just anecdotal of with the development that's going on, is it far enough along that we should see some substantial new tax base in the next year?
Okay, so I did include in your package, you've been in here this morning, a slide that shows changes in appraised values from the state, and I think the question is mainly about the state investments, and this is the same slide you saw in the budget retreat back in February. The state appraised properties are much different than what any other property in county is. Any other property in county, we're appraising those annually at the local level. State appraisers, your state utilities and estates are appraising on those, and they always use the income approach. So the catch is if a company, Duke Progress or Mariah Energy Center, is investing new money in a county, that doesn't necessarily raise your income. So use the income approach to appraise the property, they invest the money here, but investment doesn't equal income, you think the value may not change. However, what it does do, it changes their piece of the pie. So they take the total income for that public utility, company-wide, then go statewide, then go down to Person County, the amount of investment in our county gives us a bigger portion of a net income. So it really is all but impossible to guess. I do reach out to the state every year after May 1st, is when the state utilities have to report their numbers, just to get an idea what to expect in our September 1 report, which is after we've adopted a budget. And the information I got from the state this year, which was mid-May, was that Duke Progress was looking flat, not much change this year. That's based on the total income, not based on their investments, so they haven't decided how to split that piece of the pie out to us. So no substantial change in state appraised for Duke Progress, which is our biggest player there. State appraised being just a little bit over a billion dollars, over our seven billion dollar base. Mariah Energy Center is just coming online, as we know, there's just starting construction, and they did give us a little bit better information there, they think about a $60 million dollar increase in their valuation for 2025. And looking towards future years, I don't have any numbers that show what investment and what timeline Duke or Mariah Energy or any other state appraised would do. And again, it's all about that income. So for example, we had a really warm winter, Duke Progress and Mariah Energy Center will probably have a lower income that year because there's just no demand for, a lesser demand for their services. So it really is hard to predict, but with those two out there, and knowing there's going to be more investment in Person County than other counties in their jurisdiction it's going to get, I would expect those numbers to continue to go up. Duke Progress is going to probably have a time where we're taxing the new plants and the old plant, the coal-fired plants, at the same time, because they got, it's about a seven-year project from what I understand. So they're going to be taxing both, so we're going to have value, and then we're going to get to an all-time high, then it's going to drop off as the old plants are decommissioned. So we know that's going to happen. Other things that I know is on the horizon, we all feel that Microsoft is going to announce something down the road, we don't know when, I don't have any more information than anyone else has, and I think that's really zero information. We know that's coming, we know a couple of the industries that are expanding, we've had some phone calls about some vacant plants maybe being transferred, so we know that's coming. But it's really difficult for me to predict even at the budget retreat for the next fiscal year, much less trying to look at more and more years down the road. I think Person County is continuing to grow, I think based on what I'm seeing that we're going to have more tax base in the future, but I really don't have a whole lot more to offer. Can I elaborate on that anymore, is that kind of fill your questions or?
Yeah, the construction at Duke and Embridge is what I was really thinking about, so that $60 million figure for Embridge is exactly what I was going to say.
Sixty for Mariah Energy Center. Another thing I guess the Board could do would be reach out to Duke Progress and Mariah and ask them their timeline for construction and what they expect to invest each year, but still trying to push that down to the income and our slice of the pie and our valuation of the state is, that would give you a whole lot of insight to what that number's going to be. We really have a sigh of relief when we get the notice from the state in September that our value is what it is, and we're always conservative because that's 20% of our base.
No, you answered the question there again. Are you staying or not?
I can definitely stay. I'm here at your disposal, so if you have other things you want me to stick around, I'm definitely willing to do so.
If not, I can ask the other question now. And really, it's not about changing the way the budget is, but based on what I'm seeing with commercial properties that are changing hands, I'm concerned that we'll be out of the range of market again a lot sooner than four years, and I don't watch the residential, so I don't know if you're seeing anything that would make you think that overall.
Do you, are you seeing commercial exchange at a higher rate or lower?
Higher than the.
Higher than tax value?
Adjust.
I've seen a few of those, and I've seen very few under tax value. So what we really have to focus on is, of course, is fairness and equity, and we also have to watch that first, fourth, and seventh year of the reappraisal cycle. So if we're below 10% of market value this year, that means we owe, and fairly so, we owe all the state appraised that same discount that we're offering all other properties, so we would lose revenues. The next time we're looked at is the fourth year. So we're scheduled for 2029 reappraisal by resolution, we automatically go there four year unless the Board does something. If we, two years from now, know that we are, the market's dropping, we will keep that 2029 reappraisal on schedule. On the other side, if we realize that we're overvalued two years from now, we would want to keep that 2029 reappraisal on schedule. Some, it's one county out there, Wake County, that's trying to go, that has set to go to a shorter cycle than four years. Durham County did it once because their numbers were off enough, they were going to have to equalize the state, and they did a three-year. But Wake County is going to a three-year this next cycle, and they're planning on going to it every other year after that. Wake County is much different than us, also Mecklenburg County's staying a four-year, so until we see the Wake County model as being something that can be sustained, something that's needed, I don't think other counties are going to follow that. It is likely that it would not be any cheaper to do reappraisals more frequently, because you're still going to do the same review of all properties. Our reappraisal costs about $800,000 to do. So to do it more often when the values haven't changed would not really make a lot of sense. That's the reason we did skip two reappraisal cycles, so we skipped the 2009 and the 2017, because the four-year cycle didn't make a lot of sense, but the values were still pretty stagnant. But we'll watch those and we'll report back to the Board. The Board has to approve our reappraisal contracts, so when we get ready to start the work two years from now, we will either come with a contract for the Board to look over with us, or we will come with the idea that we don't need that four-year reappraisal. It really is hard to predict what the commercial market's going to do. I know some of the big cities are getting hit with commercial going down, because office space is not needed as much in big cities, but I don't know how it trickle downs to us in the future. We'll watch it and see, but we have so few commercial property sales, it really is hard to predict what that might happen.
Yeah, I was wondering if you had a pulse on how residential's doing in terms?
And all due respect, you probably have a better idea on that than I do with your commercial real estate in the background. I haven't seen a lot of sales yet, you may know some things that are being, just under contract that I haven't seen, but we haven't had a whole lot of sales in the last six months, so it really is hard to predict. I wish I had more, more commercial industrial sales, it would be easier.
No, I was saying residential, because I watch the commercial, but I don't watch residential.
Residential is, so I just did the sales ratio for the first quarter, so if I say first quarter, the first cycle of the year is January through the end of May, and our numbers were 99.67% of market, so we're just ever so slightly under 100%. That's a random selection, state tells us which sales to look at, our numbers are dead on right now. And a year from now, hopefully we'll be on 95%, where the numbers keep going up, but I really don't know what's going to happen in the future. But we'll watch it and we'll report back to the Board on a regular basis, so y'all know what we know.
Okay, thank you.
So that done for me today?
Stick around.
Thank you. I shouldn't have asked. Thank you.
All right.
Could I say something in addition to what Russell just stated? So I hope that that sales ratio that he just shared is a good indicator of how close the values that have been established through the revaluation process are to the current market. That's very good to hear. And I also wanted to share that we do have planned for NCACC to complete a peer review of the Tax Office this month, and in the report that they'll provide back to us, they will provide some recommendations related to the rebau cycle and what's recommended at the state level going forward in light of changes that are being made, you know, or considered by other counties. That is something, they'll look at the rebau that we just completed, they'll offer feedback on that, they'll offer suggestions for improvement the next time around, and then they'll offer some guidance related to the rebau cycle going forward.
When do you expect that to come back?
I'm not sure if it's been scheduled yet, Russell, have you? I think, I think they were going to reach.
I have not heard from the team yet, but we anticipated, email a call this week, but I have not heard yet.
But it was likely to happen in the month of June due to everybody's schedules.
Is there a resource you can share so that we can see what happened around the state with, with other counties as far as, you know?
We, we did share during some of the reappraisal talks about the percentage of increases. What you have to factor in is some counties in that report were four-year counties like us, and some were five or six or eight-year counties, so you see different increases. The surrounding counties are, had a higher increase than we had this time, mainly Durham, Orange County, Casel. Uh, Casel and Granville County were last year. But our increase was a little bit less than the surrounding counties. We came in at roughly fifty-two percent increase on average. Uh, Orange County was in the seventies, and Durham County's in the seventy percent also. And both of those, I believe, were four-year counties.
I know that when we had the budget retreat, a lot of them hadn't come out yet. And, and even when we had, um, that meeting downstairs where there was a lot of public comment, we were still at the forefront of putting out the numbers.
Yes, we were, um, we stayed ahead on this reappraisal project, um, all throughout the project, which is admirable. We had, we got limited staff, but we stayed ahead the whole time. We were the first county in our area to release the new valuations. And a lot of the stuff we heard at first was, you know, we're not Orange County, we're not Durham County. Well, yes, we're not. And when they released that numbers, people understood that we're not Orange and we're not Durham. They had significant, significantly higher increases than we had. Uh, I can definitely get some better numbers for you. Uh, we'll, we'll have to go through and try. It'd be nice to have a map that shows them.
Yes.
And show the different colors based on the years or, and the state normally puts that out, but it's going to be another month or so if they, if they stay on trend, but we'll see that. Uh, and usually it's after all the appeals are over.
And the school of government tracked it for whichever counties would report it to them, so that might be a resource.
We did have a less of an increase, but we, you know, it does sound about the percentage increase, we had to debt market. That's what, plus the state law requires. Um, so our, our change was based on our sales, and our sales were less of increase than other surrounding counties.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the adjust, adjustments to the recommended budget. Members of the board, it's in our hands now, so, um, I will kick off discussion. The set collections rate, Russell, was ninety-seven point five, is that correct? Okay. What would be the estimate if we raised that from ninety-seven point five to ninety-eight point five?
To ninety-eight point five, okay.
Two hundred and thirty-two thousand eighty-five dollars.
Two hundred and thirty-two thousand?
Eighty-five.
Home point, thank you very much. Guess that, that question was coming.
Write down the, the point five.
Mm-hmm. And that's point five, or is that the, is that ninety-eight point five?
Ninety-eight.
All right. So if we, if you go to ninety-eight point five, it'd be double that, correct?
If I, no, that, that's just a half percent.
Okay.
So that would be.
And while she's calculating, Russell, what's our current projected collection rate right now?
I was hoping you actually speak to that. Um, so as of this morning, our collection rate is ninety-nine point two seven. Now, the reason to be conservative with the collection rate, and I think all of you are aware of this, uh, we are very dependent on the top twenty taxpayers. If we had a big taxpayer that declared bankruptcy, and we had this two years ago, uh, we cannot make them pay, they don't have to pay, and that affects your collection rate. So you would not make budget if one of your big players did not pay. That's the reason we're always conservative. That's a safety net there. If we were more diversified, if our, um, your top list had tons of companies in it, then we could be more flexible there. But we're at ninety-nine point two seven today, to answer your question.
All right, thank you, sir.
Four sixty-four, one seventy.
Four sixty-four, one seventy. Thank you, ma'am, greatly appreciate it. Members of the board, if you, does anyone have any thoughts on the requested positions being added to the budget?
Yes, so I've got the list that we were presented in February of all the new position requests. Um, so the only one that remains is the production maintenance technician for PI, and then the social services department was trimmed down to five, is that right?
Yes, they originally requested fourteen, and five are recommended. And I can give you a full list of the ones that were not included, if you'd like to hear that.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
It may be slightly different than, it's prob, it may be the same as what was in your presentation. I would refer back to the one-on-one document, um, that we reviewed prior to my budget presentation. So of, uh, the positions that were not recommended, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in social services. And then the sheriff's office had originally requested four positions. One of the animal control officers is being recommended as an animal control supervisor. The second animal control officer is not being recommended. And then there was a deputy sheriff for warrant service and a deputy sheriff special assignment for county resource officer. And then there was a request for an assistant chief of EMS.
Can you say that one more time, ma'am, regarding the animal control?
Yes, so initially there were two animal control officers requested. One of those positions is being recommended as an additional animal control supervisor within the animal services department.
So my understanding of that, that was two years ago moved from, those two positions were moved from animal control, where presumably they were already being supervised by somebody there, right?
Yes.
And then they were moved over to the sheriff's office, and they added duties because they had them be sworn officers, so they did more than animal control calls, right?
Yes.
And so then they were at, they were requesting two more, I guess maybe to have one per shift because they would have that animal control response added with other law enforcement duties. But then when it went back to animal control services, it seems like it would be supervised by whoever supervised before when it was there.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't really understand the need to add a position when it just went out and then came back, because those people would be losing those other law enforcement duties and just kind of go back to the way it was before.
Right, so the rationale for that is that in the meantime, over that two-year period, we have, um, focused the animal services staff on the animal shelter and the responsibilities there in the animal shelter. So they've grown their programs, they've grown their services within the animal shelter. Um, previously, Kelly Lewis, as the animal services director, supervised the animal control officer. She also served as backup, and she is currently, um, doing those duties as well with the vacancies that we have in the officer positions. Um, so she responded to calls, she, um, supervised the two positions and was in the on-call rotation. So adding in the animal control supervisor position does enable that person to be in the on-call rotation along with two officers for the county and then the officer for the city. So you've got the four to create a standard on-call rotation. That way, the animal services director does not have to be on-call anymore. In addition, there's the kind of call-taking responsibilities or dispatching responsibilities associated with the animal control function. So previously, all of that fed through the animal shelter when it was part of that department. So, um, in, when they moved over to the sheriff's office, then some calls were coming into the sheriff's office, others were getting routed through, um, nine, the nine-one-one center after hours. So what this does is it brings all of that, those calls back into the animal services department, but then the supervisor would be the one who's able to receive the calls, dispatch, you know, account for the workflow while animal shelter staff continue to focus on those operations and animal welfare. One thing that we did find that was positive for moving animal control out of the shelter was just the environment within the shelter and focusing on more of the, the positive without having, um, those who might be angry or disgruntled related to their, you know, need for being involved in the animal control operations, being there in the shelter and kind of intermingling those two functions. So this is a way to continue to carve out animal control in a way that they can be highly responsive, and it also, um, gives them the resources to focus back in on the animal welfare aspects of that, um, function, which with, in the sheriff's office, they haven't had as much opportunity to focus on education and outreach, kind of the relationships with the animal services department, the health department, the reporting, and those types of things. So it just give, builds more capacity for that function by adding the supervisor position.
Well, I know she did present that when she made the presentation requesting to bring it back in that we approved. Um, but I, I'm hesitant to add positions because, um, the only way they ever are removed is through attrition, I guess, and, or if at all. And then that always increases work on HR and, um, whatnot, so I just wanted to understand why that was needed when it looked like it was just a shuffle back and forth. Um, and then I had a question too about the, the maintenance technician for Person Industries. I think when Amanda presented that, she's tied it to, maybe she tied it to Rhonda's retirement?
It is, in a way, related to Rhonda's retirement, um, but it is, uh, more related to the expansion of the recycling line, the new machines, the new workflow within the recycling center. So they are going to have new maintenance needs related to the new machine, so it's getting someone in who can become familiar with that and train on that. There's also new workflow associated with where the consumers are located throughout, um, the center, so it also just helps with the number of employees who are present in the supervision that's able to be provided to the consumers. So it is mainly related to the expansion of the center, and they did reduce their part-time line item to, um, allow for some additional funding to go towards this new position. And it is also a way to ensure cost training and succession planning with an upcoming retirement.
But you don't expect any reduction when Rhonda retires with that position?
I don't, um, and you did bring up a good point, you know, about positions and when position counts change and opportunities that are created by attrition. So that does give us an opportunity. I mean, we can always look at positions and make adjustments along the way, um, but when somebody retires or a vacancy is created, that is a good opportunity for departments to look at how those positions fit in with their operations and whether they should fill them in the same way going forward, or if there's a case to be made to do something differently with those positions, either by cutting back, moving to part-time, or, um, reclassifying them to perform a different function within the department.
So we're making an investment in equipment. Is there a, a new revenue stream, uh, stream that's going to be created by adding this person in this new equipment, or is it all just expenses that's being added?
So we do anticipate higher revenues with the new equipment because our separation procedures, and I'm looking at, if anybody's here that can speak more, Brian, if there's anything you want to chime in on, please feel free to do so. But the, um, the new equipment is going to allow us to be able to sort more effectively for sending things to the market. We're able to separate and have less contamination, so we may be able to get a higher rate of return, um, for selling those goods. Um, and there are other, um, aspects that could potentially increase our revenue if we ultimately invest in the mattress and tire shredder. We've discussed how we might be able to have some additional revenue streams by offering services to surrounding communities and cutting back on our costs for disposal of scrap tires. So there are, um, different aspects of this recycling center upgrade that, uh, may be able to increase our revenues in the future.
So we're making investments, and we're talking about adding people. We really don't have a firm grasp of what kind of revenue increase we would have to offset that expense, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to go back in and look at the, um, departmental request and what was tied to, you know, as far as revenues go, what was tied to, um, the new sorter. But, I mean, basically, we needed to do something within the recycling center because the equipment that we had, um, had been in place for a very long time, and we were getting to the point where it was, um, extremely difficult to maintain. And there were also some risks associated with that as far as, um, worker safety that are, um, mitigated with the new system that's being put into place. But it will allow us to sort materials in a different way, um, handle a higher volume of materials, and create other efficiencies within the center. But it really wasn't, um, going to be sustainable to continue to work with the equipment that we had in place.
Michelle, I'll, I'll reach out to Amanda, and I'll go with you over there and we'll tour the, um, facility, and she can enlighten you on a whole lot more.
And that will be, yeah, and thank you for making that offer, and, um, it'll also, that'll be part of your new commissioner orientation to go over and tour the recycling center as well. You're welcome to visit anytime.
Hi, yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
So for the two other positions for the sheriff and the two for the emergency services, um, I see Tom is here. Is that something for you that could be addressed with increasing an overtime budget or some way to accommodate other than adding positions which are not recommended in, in the manager's budget anyway?
So the, the issue for, um, the, the one position, the assistant chief EMS position, the issue there is really workload. So basically, when we look at the workload within the EMS division, basically, we have three administrative staff, um, including myself, right? So that, that model's not changed in probably ten, fifteen years, but yet our workforce continues to grow. So what we find is that the current EMS, the current EMS chief, uh, ends up spending the majority of her time dealing with operational issues and not dealing with the larger strategic administrative issues that we really need to focus on, it's a matter of bandwidth. So increasing overtime isn't going to fix that issue. The issue is the amount of work that needs to be done and not having enough staff in place to do the work, and that, that really is the, was the driving force behind that.
Okay.
How many units did you have ten years ago?
Actual trucks running on the street. I don't want to speak off the top of my head, I wasn't here ten years ago.
How many do you have now?
We have four trucks that we staff, uh, regularly, uh, plus a supervisor vehicle. If you look at our call volume and you look at where we're at today, we really need five trucks on the road, um, but that's a staffing issue. We'd have to add more people to the staff to be able to staff a fifth truck.
How many calls are you guys responding to a day in a year?
So at a day, I think last year we were seventy-two hundred calls, uh, somewhere in that neighborhood. Day, day varies, and it really just depends. Um, yes, and again, what, as our, as our population continues to age, um, and as services in our area don't continue to keep up with that aging population, what's important is those seven thousand calls may not, may not sound like a lot of calls. The reality is, is that the majority of our transports are going out of the county. So when I have a unit transport a patient to Durham or UNC or Duke, whatever the case may be, I may lose that truck for two hours. And it's, you know, and meanwhile, calls continue to come in. Case in point, yesterday, we ran out of four trucks in ten minutes. All four trucks were gone, we were calling for mutual aid, couldn't get mutual aid. That is, that is a regular occurrence.
So out of your seventy-two hundred calls a year, how many of those are emergencies and how many of those are really sort of convalescent-type calls? Just patient transfer type things?
So when we look at our, when we look at our mix, it's typically a seventy-thirty mix. So seventy percent of our calls would be advanced life support, thirty percent of our calls would be basic life support. Again, that varies by day and, and period, but that's, that's what our call volume typically breaks down to.
So what about that other position, the technology specialist?
So the technology specialist, we actually asked to have that taken out of the, out of the, um, out of the personnel request, that was, that was our request to take that out. That's a position, uh, that predominantly would reside within our nine-one-one center. out. That's a position uh that predominantly would reside within our nine-one-one center. Basically, as as everything in life, technology is becoming more and more prevalent. We don't have anybody within our division to manage all of the various software platforms that we have. And and these platforms are very technical. We share that with IT. Um there's discussion between myself and the IT director of the amount of workload that we're placing on IT to maintain these systems. And we call the help desk and ask the help desk to shoot a problem. If they're not familiar with that software, it takes more time for that to get solved. Having somebody dedicated to that software uh who knows it in and out and can solve problems. Uh we had several times last year where our nine-one-one system went down and to try to get it fixed and not having people that had the intimate knowledge to fix it created problems. That being said, uh in the budget process, I did not feel comfortable coming to the board and 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 recommending that position because the IT director and I still were sort of hammering out the details of how we would split those duties. There's a very fine line between where we're comfortable drawing administrator access and so far as who can do administrator work within the software versus who has um basically super administrator access. We were concerned about the the um the cybersecurity implications of that. We did not feel like we had a solid enough package to present to the board at this time, so we would treat that from the recommendation.
Yeah, it looked like there might have been something similar with DSS where they had a dedicated person that then went back to IT or something. I don't know about that. But um, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a comment. So I um just wanted to say that not including the assistant chief of EMS in the recommended budget is not an indication that I don't see a need for that position or a benefit um to our county operations for that position. It was just part of the exercise of trying to trim back. Um and part of what we did through those conversations is we did, um HR worked closely um with the department to identify some of the duties that are currently being um performed by the division chief of EMS and actually looking at where some of those could be carved out and reassigned to another position. So giving that position some additional duties, um which helps, you know, with professional development. It helps alleviate some um of the pressure, but it doesn't go all the way. It's just kind of an interim step to meeting a need, but it certainly doesn't satisfy the the need that the department has as um it's the demand for services has continued to grow.
Well, I, I mean, that's what you were tasked with and I appreciate it and recognize how difficult it is. And and thank you for this book because it's so helpful to go through all the objectives of the departments and accomplishments of the departments. And and if I saw a need to add anybody, I would say it would be to Kim so we could do more promoting what all these departments are doing and um the county employees, because it's really good stuff in here. Um, you know, it's tough. We have a lot of needs and.
Mm-hmm. I agree with that statement.
We need people to fulfill them, so.
Right.
I don't know how you want to do this, Chairman. I have some different notes throughout, but.
Call as you see it. Just go ahead.
All right.
As you'd like to.
Is there a policy about supporting local businesses in in particular? It was brought to my attention of somebody who wanted to order office furniture from a local vendor and was redirected to Amazon. And then I was told that maybe that's a policy or a a practice that's promoted. And and I just say, my thing about that is, we fund an entire department of three people encouraging recruiting and supporting small business here and um and the small businesses here are going to be paying taxes here, employing people here. Not only that, but bringing revenue in from other counties through through them and also supporting local businesses themselves. And I believe some other counties do have a a local first, uh or at least encourage their departments to do that. So I just wonder what our guidance is here. And if it's not that, I'd like to see it be that.
Okay, sure. I can't point to any specific policy language around that. And Tracy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh but we did implement Amazon Business last year and had some discussion around this. So at the time that we put that into place, um we pushed out kind of a program to county departments about being able to utilize Amazon Business, creating those business accounts in each department. We do get some money back um from the purchases that are made through Amazon Business, and we've been able to create some preferred lists, like IT has a list of preferred products. With that in mind, we also had some conversations with local businesses at that time, um and conversations with department heads as well, that we're not discouraging the local purchasing, but we're putting an option in place to price compare and to determine whether the price difference is uh significant enough to warrant ordering through Amazon to save on the taxpayer dollars that are going towards those purchases. So there are some efficiencies created, some savings created by purchases through Amazon. In other cases, it's more beneficial to uh purchase local to, as you said, support those businesses. We have existing relationships. They may offer some um higher quality products or uh different type of delivery options that are more advantageous to ordering through Amazon. So we have not put a policy in place that everyone must go to Amazon Business first, or that, you know, that there's a local preference. But our communication has just been to look at doing price comparisons to make the the purchase that makes the most sense with the tax dollars. With those local businesses, they have also, many of them have offered to price match when at all feasible. So that's another option that departments have, is to get the quote from Amazon. And then um if there is a significant difference, go back to that local business to see if there's the possibility of price matching.
How do we assure that they are doing that, that they are going back to the local business and giving them an opportunity to price match? I mean, we can say it, but how do we know we're doing it?
Yeah. So I can, I cannot speak to an absolute that that's being done in every case. And I wouldn't expect that it be done in every case, but um the communication has been around doing that, you know, whenever possible, whenever that makes sense, but not that it's one hundred percent of the time.
Well, I'll go back to how you evaluate efficiency. And there's two ways to do that because the the local business is bringing revenue into the county in multiple ways. And we're spending those tax dollars to fund a department to support that. So it's not necessarily just a black and white, this product is cheaper here than it is there.
Right.
Um, it's, you know, the whole thing about what we're trying to do is grow the local economy. And what's the best way to do that?
Right.
Yep. There's local people being employed that's paying taxes and buying services and buying food and paying, you know, paying taxes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I had a question about um the increase in the contracted services due to archive social and next request. I just wasn't sure if that was bringing archive social into next request or if that was just two different.
So those are uh both services provided by Civic Plus. So they're both, they're two different services that Civic Plus provides. And that increase is uh just an annual increase in the cost of subscribing to those two services. So it went up by two thousand fifteen dollars between fiscal year fourteen and fiscal year twenty, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six in order to renew and maintain our subscriptions to those two services.
Okay, so it wasn't any kind of enhanced?
No.
Service. It was just they both went up?
Yes.
And then it looked like the fleet management budget was going to be decreased, but there's cars being added to fleet.
Yes, because we're purchasing fewer cars in fiscal year twenty-six. So in the current fiscal year, I believe we purchased twenty-eight, and I believe the recommendation is for eighteen in the next fiscal year. So we will be ordering fewer vehicles. Um so that was a way to reduce the overall budget um for the upcoming year. We are purchasing all of the vehicles that were requested by departments for next year, as well as a few others that were identified in our analysis as meeting the replacement criteria for mileage and age.
Have you heard of any uh problems, any more problems with um the fleet management chair's department deal?
So we have not received the vehicles in the timely manner that we expected.
They have not received.
Right, we have not, we did not in this year receive all of the vehicles as soon as we would have expected by implementing this program. So there was a very long time to get that ramped up. At this point, for fiscal year twenty-six, we're already working with Enterprise to place orders for those vehicles that we've identified. Uh they won't be delivered until the new fiscal year and they won't be delivered at all unless the funding is approved um through this budget process. But we've already started that. So this, from the staff's perspective, we would like to give Enterprise one more year to meet the expectations that were set when we originally implemented this program for speedier delivery of vehicles than we were able to do on our own. Um but we recognize it did not meet expectations this year. And again, it's giving it one more year to determine whether those were just kind of um.
How many did they push them?
How many what?
How many did we receive?
I do not.
We had a meeting with Enterprise yesterday and I was only in a part of the meeting. But I believe the Sheriff's Department is scheduled to get three vehicles next week. And we are on track to finish out all the vehicles for fiscal year twenty-five. And as the manager said, they are the oh, the what, one of the things, many things happened last year, but one of the things that happened was it was the pilot year. Normally, they place the orders during this time of the year where the order bank is open, but we were unable to do that last year. This year, we're in that cycle the way that we are supposed to. So we've got a new representative and he came up yesterday and met with everybody. Ray was very honest with him about the problems and the expectations that we have going forward. We are on track to finish out fiscal year twenty-five's orders this summer. We'll get them all done in here. And then we're ahead of schedule, starting to order for next year pending board's approval.
Do we need to have Tracy come up for the recording for questions?
It might, I don't know. How do you feel about that with your laptop standing up here, picking, yeah, the with the microphone picking you up? That might be better to sit maybe on the front row so when you speak, you can speak into the microphone.
Do you just want me to restate what I said or in general move on?
Just like going forward, I guess.
And it's really for the recording purposes. We could hear you in the room.
I always listen to the city council meetings and it drives me crazy when they ask staff stuff in the back of the room and you can't hear what they had to say.
Who who is managing the fleet management program?
So Ray Fushi, who's our general services director, is our primary contact. I mean, he is responsible for the fleet program for the county. The sheriff's office has a designated person within the sheriff's office. It was Mickey Rogers and he retired. And I'm not exactly sure who's doing that now. Dustin Harris is now the fleet manager within the sheriff's office.
When we first identified that we needed needed to make a choice, how long did it take time-wise to come up with Enterprise as a vendor? Was that three months, six months?
It was about whatever year.
It was a lengthy process that we worked through to get to Enterprise.
Assuming we've drawn the line in the sand and we've given them a timeline, are you working on identifying another vendor? Because we can't wait twelve months and decide they aren't, they aren't meeting the target. And then we've got to spend eighteen more months looking for them to be.
The reason that we went with Enterprise originally was because there was a significant problem with every department ordering all of their vehicles individually. There was a supply chain problem. Vehicles were six to nine to twelve months out getting them anyway. So we gave Enterprise, we talked to other counties, we had Enterprise come present and talk to us. And it came, like the manager said, it was a very lengthy process. We gave them the option because they were the only vendor in North Carolina who could handle something on this size that we wanted. So there is no one else. If this does not work out, but I believe it will, but if it does not, we'll have to revert back and come up with another policy of how to order these vehicles ourselves and manage that process.
That explains the problem. They got a monopoly. There's no competition to make them see a sense of urgency to to resolve the issue.
I do, and I do, I do think they now see the sense of urgency. I think we did um experience a period of time where their staffing was just was not meeting our needs and they made some changes there once they were fully aware of what the problems were. So I think they're very much committed to meeting our needs now. But I agree with what Tracy said. You know, the next best option might be to just bring it back internally and really look at that internal process and how we would make some changes um going forward if we, if Enterprise does not work out for us this year.
Well, I think we need to start looking that way and be ready because you're not going to be able to do it in four weeks. You're gonna have to be ready if they don't meet your expectations.
We have a plan to reassess in just a few months. We have monthly meetings with Amazon. I say we turn a certain financial, but the team has monthly meetings with Amazon.
Enterprise.
I'm sorry, Enterprise. I was looking at the chairman thinking, oh, Commissioner Wilber and thinking, um, Amazon, sorry, Enterprise. And and so we have a six-month mark where we're going to reevaluate before we start this next, the next budget season. So when we come to you and talk to you at the retreat, we'll have an update. And we'll be able to tell you where we are in the process and where we think we're going.
Okay, that's fine. But we're gonna be looking to you guys for for results.
So you're saying that you asked for twenty-eight and those twenty-eight will be fulfilled by June thirty, you expect?
Tracy, what are you talking about?
Yeah, I was a little confused about you were saying they won't be fulfilled unless we approve this budget, or in you saying they will be.
I'm speaking about fiscal year twenty-five. So we were originally, we had problems getting off the ground. We had problems when Hurricane Helene hit the mountains. There was a a huge problem there. That delayed all of fiscal year twenty-five's vehicles coming. Garrett, who is the vice president of Enterprise, happened to contact me right about that time. I was very blunt, very honest with him. He came in and reorganized our whole Enterprise team. We do not have anyone on that team that we had previously. We have a whole new team who's dedicated to making sure Person County is happy with the results. They are in the process. The vehicles have started arriving. Um, three for the Sheriff's Department next week? Three or four next week, getting all of those in. I cannot tell you that by June thirtieth, we will have all of fiscal year twenty-fives, but I can say I expect to have them by the end of the summer. And then we are already in the process of placing the orders for fiscal year twenty-six, so we won't have this repeat problem.
So, so yeah, what I was saying is we are placing the orders for fiscal year twenty-six, um the the vehicles that are included in the recommended budget. We have the flexibility to cancel some or all of that order if you all were not to approve that through this process. But we're getting ahead of the game by going ahead and working with Enterprise to pre-order for next year's vehicles.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to get at is in terms of this year's budget, next year's budget and the change, um did we pay for vehicles that we didn't get? Is that going to transfer over?
We don't pay for any vehicles until they arrive in our parking lot. So the money has been encumbered for the vehicles that we have ordered for fiscal year twenty-five, but not spent. So until they show up, we do not get invoice and we do not pay it.
And that money remains within the fleet fund. So it will be available. If if we don't receive a vehicle for this year by June thirtieth, that money is still there residing within that fund to pay for it in the new fiscal year from fiscal year twenty-five funding.
Okay, I want to make sure I understand. So how many more vehicles are we waiting for for fiscal year twenty?
Do you know exactly?
I believe it's at least, it might be a little bit more.
I would have to have Ray, Ray, so I handled the money. Ray handles the actual vehicles. I would actually, I would have him have to tell you how many.
So if those ten, three are.
Three or four are on their way next week or the weekend.
Four. And then what um um manager, county manager was saying, um, we had for next year was twenty-eight, but we were only recommending eighteen? And you put in order in for eighteen?
We went ahead and um worked with Enterprise. So we received requests from departments.
Okay.
And then we worked with Enterprise to go ahead and identify roughly. And then we worked with enterprise to go ahead and identify roughly the same number of vehicles to replace. You know, based on those with the most age and mileage or having mechanical problems. Because our goal with implementing enterprise in this year was to work towards modernizing our fleet. And some of the benefits that we saw with that would be lower maintenance cost, um, safer vehicles. Improving employee morale because many of our vehicles were so old, they just didn't feel good driving them. So we were working towards those goals, um, and also through enterprise, having them order vehicles for us, track them, do all of that. Um, and then their maintenance program also provides benefits in terms of negotiated prices for services. And the centralized billing and, um, technicians on their staff who can approve certain things based on their expertise. So we worked with enterprise to identify, well, if we want to maintain that schedule of, um, meeting that goal of modernizing our fleet. Over a shorter timeframe than what we've been doing, because we've been slowly replacing vehicles over the years. Then looking at that twenty eight to thirty target is what we started out with for the next fiscal year. In the end, in order to make this budget work and get to the recommended level that I thought was reasonable for us to make, we cut back on that. So we are only recommending replacing eighteen vehicles. And not everything that we initially considered, you know, based on the condition of the fleet. So those eighteen vehicles cover all of the requests that were made by departments for next year. What they self identified as needing replacement based on the criteria that we have set. Plus a few additional ones that didn't make their way into the request, but that we felt should be replaced at this time. You may also note that we're removing eight vehicles from our fleet and those are eight underutilized vehicles. They just have not been driven much, um, over the last fiscal year. And that's primarily due to the age of the vehicles, um, but in a couple of cases, it's older, like fifteen passenger vans. So one thing that Tracy had thought of and she talked with the, uh, mainly Parks and Rec and Cooperative Extension who utilize those for summer camps. We can just rent fifteen passenger vans for a week at a time when there's a need for them. Because otherwise they just sit out here in the parking lot. So that was a way we looked at creating, um, some efficiencies within our fleet. Cutting back, it'll save some on maintenance and insurance costs for those vehicles. There's Ray, we got the text.
You want to follow up question?
Oh, um, I was asking how many more vehicles we need from enterprise to cover, to finish out this fiscal year?
So far, uh, this year, of course, we, we've budgeted thirty vehicles this year. We have received nineteen, uh, I think. Four, five, six, seven more are supposed to be delivered next week, so that gets us up to twenty six. So I think we're four short of their, four short of our quota, uh, as far as getting them all here next week.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have you seen improvement, Ray, with, with enterprise?
With. So with a lot of issues that have gone on with enterprise, uh, you know, this year, to be honest, probably not a lot of improvement. The representative that was assigned to our account, uh, in the very beginning, uh, she bailed out on enterprise, uh, for reasons unbeknown to us. But, uh, she no longer works with them, but she was supposed to put in orders and so forth and told us, so, so we got behind the eight ball to begin with. And I think probably due to no fault of enterprise, but, but I've told, uh, Catherine and others, in my opinion, the second year here is going to be this straw that breaks camel's back. If they deliver according to their promises, then we may be okay. But if this year turns out to be, or this coming year turns out to be like the last one, then my recommendation would probably be to look for other options. But, uh, right now, we've got a new account representative. He seems to be committed and doing everything he can to get things back in order. So, uh, I'm hopeful that this year will be a turnaround for him, but, uh, but for a lot of reasons, this past year just did not produce the results we were looking for. You know, we could have ordered vehicles and had them probably about the same time that we're getting them in now, doing it on our own. So that was one of the big promises that they had told us upfront, hey, we're going to have vehicles in here much earlier than, uh, much faster and, uh, than you were able to get them. And it just didn't happen the first year.
What about the repair side of it?
The repair side, I think is working well now. It took us a while to get, uh, different ones on for whatever reason. Brands was a little slow when to engage and get on the program, but, uh, but now we're, we have the, all four or five vendors that we wanted part of the program. Uh, we're getting, uh, good feedback from the repairs and maintenance. We got, uh, everything that's done to the vehicles now is being tracked, uh, so we got good maintenance records. So yes, I think the maintenance part of it has come together pretty well.
Okay, um, while Tracy's there, a couple more. How's it going with the grant writer and how is that being able to be widely utilized and is it available to all departments?
It's available to all departments, uh, all departments are not utilizing her. So she is a contracted grant writer and she did not choose to bill the county last month because we really didn't use her. So after we get through the budget, I was going to speak to departments again. Part of that is the state and federal funding, everything was a little frozen, they're not really sure what's going on. But I have been a little disappointed with the lack of outreach from some of our departments to the, to the grant writer.
Yeah, well, speaking as somebody who has applied for a lot of grants, um, I think a lot of the success of it is being able to tell your narrative of why you need it. And that might not be knowledge that's transferable to, you know, to somebody just kind of in a generic role. I mean, I know there, it's a popular thing that, there's a field for it for a reason, but, um, at the same time, I guess they would have to weigh if it actually saves them time. Or if they're just having to sit with that person to say, here's why this is an av- advantage for us.
The way that she works is she researches the grants, we ask departments to send in their requests, what they wanted, their wish list, if you will. And she reaches, researches the grants and sends them back to the departments. The departments have to put together the rough part of the grant and then she takes it and makes it presentable for the grant itself. Just have not seen the use. And so it, it, as I said, when we get through the budget and there's a little time, I was going to possibly put together a Zoom so she could speak to departments directly. And see if they want to reengage. But she is a contract employee and, like I said, she did not bill us last month because she didn't have the hours.
Okay, so her contract is set for, she gets a monthly amount, but she has opted not to invoice.
She, it is an hourly amount and we contract her for up to twenty hours a month, but when she doesn't work those hours, she does not bill us.
And then, um, as a department that touches all departments and all the other departments, or a lot of the other departments had increases. I would expect you to have an increase and you didn't, so appreciate you keeping yours flat and slightly a little bit of a decrease.
We try.
All right, um, last night I think I had before, other than talking about the nonprofits, um, page one fifty five, the fire tax district. I just had a question about the department request amount of the VFD unallocated for nine hundred thirty one thousand. That was not in the manager recommended, I just wonder what that was about.
Let me get to that page, what page is it?
One fifty five in our books.
I mean, I can tell you off the top of my head, but I'd rather have it in front of me. So the way that came together, I mean, that, uh, that budget, what we use that unallocated line item for is to. So Russell projects the revenues that we're going to bring in based on the tax rate. And then we construct the fire and rescue tax district budget. So we look at whatever's in that contracted services line item, um, and then we look at each of the departmental budgets. So for next year, all of the volunteer departments are getting a two percent increase based on their contract. And then Timberlake got the additional seven thousand five hundred dollars this year for their ISO bonus, so that gets built in for next year. I will note that that calculation was slightly, um, wrong in the budget document. And so that is an adjustment that you'll see on this spreadsheet. I think I'm responsible for that formula and it was off by a few thousand dollars, um, over, over for Timberlake in this document. So the unallocated is just the amount that's left over. So when we addition, when we originally entered the request, that unallocated amount was what was left within that fund. And then as we worked through the budget to get to the manager's recommended budget. Then I moved the contract for the city of Roxborough Fire from the general fund into that tax district fund. Because all the services that Roxborough Fire is providing are in, that we're contracting with them for, are in the unincorporated portion of the county. They're providing mutual aid, they're also providing all the fire services in Person County one. So when I moved that over into the recommended column, then there was no money left unallocated within that fund. It used up that, because you'll see in the budget document originally, under the request, the amount for Roxborough Fire is a hundred nine six fifty. Because that's what they would have gotten this year based on what they already had budgeted in the fire tax fund. They don't get a two percent increase, that's what was included last year. And then when I moved, um, the funding over from the general fund, that upped their allocation to five hundred twenty two thousand five thirty seven. So that, um, unallocated amount went towards that increase.
Yeah, so that's still left over five hundred thousand dollar reduction from the department requested the manager recommended, so that's what I was trying to figure out.
And that's also because that original request was based on a five cent tax rate.
Okay.
So when we put the request in, um, we based the tax revenues on the current tax rate. And so that was part of our process too. So the fire and rescue tax revenues in the requested amount were based on the five cent rate. For the general fund budget, the tax revenues were based on the seventy two point two five cent rate in the requested column. And then, um, we just, you know, in looking at the budget, determined what tax rate would be necessary to fund. Whatever would be recommended within that specific fund. So the request originally, that amount, three point two five two, in the fire and rescue tax district, is based on a five cent tax rate. The recommended budget is based on a four cent tax rate for that district.
So I had attended the chief's meeting last night and that was one of their major concerns was the two percent. It was, if they're going to get it, it's not enough.
Okay.
Um, they're worried that coming into the year that they're going to be out of money. And with fuel going up, as everything else is going up, they're worried that that two percent is just not going to make it.
Okay.
So it's, that was one of their major concerns. And I told them I'll bring it.
Okay, and I did, um, and just to let you all know, I did communicate with the chief's association in February. When we kicked off the budget process for departments. Um, I was not, uh, able to attend that meeting because of the manager's conference, um, that was, had me in Winston-Salem that evening. But I did create, um, a memo which was shared with the chief's association that explained where we were in the budget process, what we were looking at for the upcoming year. The memo indicated that all the volunteer departments were due the two percent, um, increase per their contract. And it also communicated to them that if any of the departments felt that that two percent increase was not going to be enough to meet their needs for the upcoming fiscal year. For them to put together a request to submit to the manager's office and there were some, um, deadlines set for that. I believe it was March tenth, I can, I can pull it up, I don't have it in front of me now. Um, so they were given the opportunity to submit a budget request. I did ask for them to provide me with, you know, their revenue sources, their anticipated expenditures. And what they would be requesting that would need to be funded over and above that two percent increase. And I did not receive any requests from the fire departments.
All right, I have a question for the finance officer. And I appreciate the email explaining this, but I still really need to be sold on it a little bit more. For the interest earnings part of it, um, you stated that we're getting a interest rate four point three nine.
Yes.
And having a forty percent reduction in interest rates, I'm just, I understand you're given a conservative number. And that you'll be working with lesser fund balance than the previous before, but do you really see? The makeup of the interest earnings, is everything in a money market, is it CDs, it is spread across? What's the makeup of how we generate that interest earnings?
It is everything in a money market.
Okay.
We keep operating funds at truest, that is, that does not earn interest. Everything that we do not need to sustain our operating budget is moved to NCCMT, where we're currently earning four point three nine percent. Last year, when we had more fund balance, we were earning five point two five percent, Fed cut a percentage of the interest last year. We bound, we anticipated, I think, one point eight million in interest this year, last year. I don't believe we're going to make that this year, I believe we're going to be about a hundred thousand dollars shy of that.
Well, according to this, well, let's see, now this is fiscal year twenty four.
So with what we have colle- collected in interest this year, I just, I believe we're going to be a little bit shy of what we projected. So trending out what I anticipate to have as a balance with NCCMT and a decent interest rate, I just don't think I'm going to be able to project. Even a flat. Part of that reasoning is because sales tax collections have gone down a lot. Last month, Person County was one of seventy four counties across the state that saw a year over year decrease in sales tax revenue. At your retreat, I, I gave you that indication that I was seeing that as a trend. This is also going to be the year where we have an increase in refunds, that is money that we have to give back to nonprofits as a county. I don't anticipate having the increased sales tax, I'm hoping for flat, which means I have less money to earn interest on, which is why I stay conservative with this. If we increase that interest rate and we come in under, we have to fill that gap with fund balance. And that makes me nervous since I'm trying to maintain at least a flat fund balance going forward, hopefully to grow it.
I understand that. Let me ask a question, would you be comfortable, I know that you submitted your request at a, um, to the county manager for an even one million dollars. And the county manager adjusted it by a hundred thousand dollars increase. Would you be comfortable adjusting that to one point two million? And being a little bit less conservative?
Well, the one point one was me being a little less conservative.
Okay.
That was me giving.
Okay.
The, the, the extra was, that was me being, me giving the extra. I, mil- one was, was my comfort level. I am hoping that, I am working on a policy to. Transfer as much as possible into NCCMT on a weekly basis, so that we can earn more interest.
Is that a fixed or variable rate?
It's variable.
Variable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
How do we determine what bank, uh, we have our money?
Local bank or, or money market bank?
Local bank.
There are only a few banks in Person County that can handle the amount of money that we had. A few years ago, we put it out for a bid of RFP, request for proposal, and we talked to the banks and we were sold that truest was the one for us at that time.
Okay, how often do we look at it though?
We do not look at it often, that is a cumbersome, multi-year painful process to transfer banks.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on, just looking at some other revenues. The state reimbursement for inmates is down seventy five percent, roughly forty two percent below previous year. What, what was the explanation behind that?
I do not recall the specific, um, let me see if Tracy recalls.
I'm on page forty-two.
So I believe, so you see their actuals for fiscal year twenty-four, two fourteen, four seventy. I don't think they have as many state misdemeanor confinement inmates as they anticipated. Do you have additional explanation, Tracy?
When I asked. They have to hold a certain amount of beds for Person County citizens. And the detention center has been a little more in use than, than it has been in the past for Person County citizens, therefore not having as many beds to have the state inmates. And so that is one of the reasons that the revenues have gone down.
The register of deeds fees, you know, it's, you know, fifteen thousand is fifteen thousand. But I didn't see an explanation. It looks like we're over the projected for the twenty-five budget. Why the decrease by twelve percent?
Trying to get, are you on page?
Page forty-one.
Okay. Just trying to jog my memory on specifically what that one is.
Part of the reason that you're seeing the increase in registered deed fees this year is because of a lot of land changing hands and the larger purchases that we've had. When I spoke to Lauren at registered deeds, she's not anticipating that level of volume or those large purchases that would continue with the trend, the registered deeds fees.
And I'll also note, they do have an increase in one of their line items because they are going to implement a new process or program where people can actually request, like a Person County resident could request their birth certificate, even if it's from another county through the register of deeds office. And so that is expected to increase the revenues coming in to them.
One thing I look at and Sherry talked about it with the grant writer, I see a decrease in revenue. Well, regarding grants in the revenues, and I'm wondering, is that lack of participation from department heads to pursue other grants? Just for an example, um, Pat's got a transportation grant capital, you're down fifty-two thousand dollars on that. Obviously, there would be a reason for that, but I'm just asking, when you see the line item of grants and it's a decrease, is it just because?
They're ordering the vehicles, that's related to the vehicles that they're ordering. And that's the, because we get ninety percent reimbursement for the vehicles. So that's just due to their replacement schedule and what they're ordering this year as compared to, or for next year as compared to what they ordered for this year.
Okay.
And, and just, you may see, I know, um, and I know with emergency services, they've lost some grant funding coming in for emergency management because that has been federal funding that's come through the state. And so we do anticipate losing that. Um, you'll see a reduction from the funding that we're receiving through the nine-one-one board because they're pushing us to spend down our fund balance that we have with them. So in some cases, and then you'll see in, in new grants for seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars coming in for parks and recs. So our departments are actively seeking, I have some paperwork for you to sign off on a veteran services grant for approximately fifteen thousand dollars that they received this year. So I think departments are still actively going after grants. It just kind of ebbs and flows as far as what funding's available and, you know, um, where they can fit that into their workload as far as pursuing grants. But I think there's still the mentality out there to go out, go after grants when they're available.
We received paperwork yesterday, Parks and Rec has a twenty-five thousand dollar youth sports grants that we are anticipating.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I, you know, I know Parks and Rec, they're on top of things with, with grants. I'm not speaking per se on Parks and Rec, but I'm talking about other departments that, as you said, hasn't utilized the grant writer as, as you had hoped for. And, and so that is, that's my point on this is, you know, seeing these lower revenues related to the department heads not utilizing the grant writer.
Some of it is, and some of it where you see the decreases is the leftover COVID money. A lot of grants were pushed to the county during COVID and then it carried over for a little bit. So now that money is not available anymore.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And I'll note, I think John's on a Zoom this morning listening in to see if we'll receive the funding that they applied for, for ADA improvements at our playgrounds.
Good morning, John. Hope you're doing well.
No, he's on a Zoom. Sorry, I thought he just coincidentally walked in. He's on a Zoom with a.
Oh, I thought he was listening, watching this.
No, no, there's a meeting in Nag's Head that he did not attend where they're announcing the grant awards. So he better make his calls that they announce that we won the award, so.
All right, thank you. All right, um, but going back to the, okay, but Pat's fares is down. We've got a twenty, twenty thousand dollar decrease with that twenty-eight percent down from previous year. And I see, I can understand why the expectation was lowered. But I guess why are we seeing such a lower, um, uh, revenues and usage from Pat's? Page forty-three.
Yes, so it's, that is kind of a shift for how they're accounting for their revenues. So you'll see lower, uh, some lines down. Pat's Medicaid Broker Services, that's going up by twenty-five percent, I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars. So you have a decrease in fares by twenty thousand. There's a decrease of five thousand for Medicaid Transportation, but then there's a twenty-five thousand dollar increase for Medicaid Broker Transportation. So it has to do, it's not that the, the volume of service being provided is lower, but it has to do with the types of services being provided and the way that's being billed and how we're collecting those fares and how we're accounting for that.
And what are we looking at on the screen right here?
So as y'all go about making any adjustments to the recommended budget, we will track those adjustments on this spreadsheet. So what is populated at the top is more of a technical adjustment that we need to make for J C P C because we did not receive that information from them until after the recommended budget was presented. And so there's a slight, they're receiving a little more, um, funding from the state. So that increases our match slightly. And they are reallocating some funding that previously went to Roots and Wings or, no, it previously went to Youth Villages. And for next year, some of that funding shifts to Roots and Wings. So we have an increase in the Roots and Wings budget, a decrease in the Youth Villages budget. And then we're increasing our general fund fund balance appropriation by three hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the increased match that the state is requiring us to make to J C P C that we did not have in the recommended budget.
All right, let's move on to page sixty-eight. This is the sheriff's department budget. Rest right off the bat, you know, we hear about overtime salaries. Uh, obviously, um, in this case, you know, uh, having a deputy sheriff at county commissioner meetings, that is considered overtime. We're about just under eighteen hundred dollars of meeting the sheriff's request. I'd like to see the board put in that remaining amount, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars to make it, uh, make that request fully funded.
So that's the overtime line?
Yes, overtime line item.
Well, the one thousand seven seventy-nine brings it back up to the adopted amount of thirty thousand dollars for this fiscal year. They actually requested thirty-one thousand three twenty. But you'll note under that, we actually created a new overtime line item for them in the amount of ten thousand dollars. So the overtime budget actually is going from thirty-one th, three twenty. Oh, I'm sorry, they did request the ten, okay, I see. That, but that is a new line item, so you're right.
So I guess I would change, I would adjust mine from, uh, given the difference. It's roughly three thousand, close to three thousand one, a hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Is that correct?
I'm doing the calculation.
It's three thousand ninety-nine dollars.
Three thousand ninety-nine dollars. I'd like to see that adjusted back into the sheriff's overtime budget. And also explain the maintenance for, um, the maintenance request for vehicles. We had a request of one sixty-eight and it was reduced to one oh nine.
So we did talk with the sheriff's office about that. And based on their current maintenance trends and based on their receiving the new vehicles in this fiscal year, which they have not received. So much of their maintenance cost this year is being driven by these older vehicles that are going to be replaced. Then we also, within that line item, when you see that actual, the one fifty-nine eight oh six from the previous fiscal year, that accounts for everything that's spent. But oftentimes throughout the year, they're also getting additional funds added to that when we're receiving insurance payments to go towards repairs. So they actually end up with budget amendments throughout the year that will increase that budget when they do have needed repairs that are covered by insurance. So in discussing with them, we arrived at the one oh nine being an appropriate level to recommend. Again, based on trend and based on anticipated funds being added to that line item throughout the year from insurance reimbursements. Did that cover it?
All right. Any board members have any further questions?
I wanted to talk about the nonprofit.
Okay.
If you want to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
If nobody else has any other. Okay, um, so last year I encouraged P C B S C that they should request a reimbursement of what they had invested over the years in the mega site, which would have allowed them to go out and replenish our supply of industrial property. But they opted to ask, just for some operating expenses, sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, I think. This year they're asking again, um, but they reduced the amount to fifty thousand. And I know the value that that organization has brought to the county and our economic development program. And I would want to support that request. It is difficult for me to understand without having them here to say what they would be able to accomplish with fifty thousand dollars. There's no question what they could do if they had been reimbursed last year for what had been expended on the mega site. But I would be in support of continuing to support that organization. Uh, sixty thousand dollars was given to Roxborough Housing Authority maybe two years ago. And I don't think that we've, this board has had any update on, from them about, you know, where that money went or how it was used, if it was used as it was intended. And that agreement also has no clawback. So it really is moot, I guess. But the P C B S C agreement does have that accountability within it. And, you know, I would, like I said, I would like to hear from them, what they, what they could accomplish with fifty thousand dollars in the coming year, how they anticipate using that money for the public good. But I know it's not recommended in the budget, but I would want to continue to support that group.
All right, so in the amount that you were required, was it sixty?
I think they asked for fifty.
Fifty, okay. And fifty thousand, is everyone in agreement with adding fifty thousand to that line item?
I would like to, um, make a comment about the housing authority. From my understanding, I know that money, um, hasn't been used. And I believe that they did send, um, some type of information or status to both the city and the county because they had to change the, um, chief, the C E O or director, he resigned. And they had the shift in leadership. And with that came trying to bring all of that, the information for that project back together. So, um, from my understanding, I do know that the money is still there and nothing has happened. Um, it's still there, held to be used what it was intend, intended to be used for, um, in regards to bringing a homeless shelter and transitional or, um, affordable housing units to certain areas in this community. So I do know that, from my understanding, um, that that money is sitting there um, until this entire process with the change in leadership and all of that. Um, and making those connections with those, um, agencies and companies that the previous director, um, had the relationships with in order to move forward, um, with that project.
That's my understanding too. And the thing is, you can't make speak on it, no. Until they break ground, I believe, the money's not gonna be touched.
Right.
That is my understanding as well. And I know I, we did not receive a formal report from them, but I had shared an email that did speak to the change in transition. The email did, um, include reference to an expenditure that they had made for design. And I do need to confirm that that was not saying that they used the county funding towards that. I don't think that was completely clear in the email. But it is my general understanding that they still have the sixty thousand dollars that was allocated by the county for that specific purpose to be used, um, for the actual construction and furnishing of the homeless shelter at the time that that is begun. But they have had some delays, but still intend to proceed with the project. But I can, I can get an update from them. I, but I haven't followed up from that original email that they provided upon request.
I have a question too, refresh my memory. Last year, we voted to help the Veterans Council, uh, hire, letting them hire a, like a resource person. Now, did, has she, have, got her office?
Okay, so we had a veteran services officer in place already. She was part-time, so y'all did vote to make her a full-time employee. She has an office at the senior center. And I've learned that there was some misconception around that, like some of the, but she, she, she has an office. She has an office with a meeting space at the senior center. But there is a desire and the board voted in favor of moving her to the human services center to be co-located within the consolidated human services department. So that is still our intent. We have not, and, and if these five positions are approved for social services, then we need to revisit that space as a whole. There is some space available within the health department. There's space available within juvenile justice. There's space available within Freedom House. Social services is bursting at the seams. So we've been trying to determine, um, now that we own the building, what the best space layout is there. But we've also been trying to address some of the immediate issues with the H V A C, the roof, the lighting, and all of that first. But we are at the point where Ray and I discussed, uh, earlier this week or last week about setting up meetings with USDA downstairs about their space, juvenile justice about their space, and Freedom House about their space, so we can start figuring out that, um, plan. And of course, we have this facility assessment that y'all will be doing in the upcoming fiscal year. But we are gonna try to find a solution soon for moving, um, our veteran services officer over to the human services building.
All right, going back to Commissioner Webber's request, is everybody in agreement with that?
I'm gonna reclusive myself from that, uh, chairman, because of my glove of a P C D I C.
Understandable. And so, all right. Commissioner Royster, Mr. Good? All right, so that fifty thousand added.
Okay. So we, yes, so I guess, uh, last year we funded that within the Economic Catalyst Fund. We, so what we had, what I did was I left that amount within the Economic Catalyst Fund. I just added it into the incentives line item for this year. So what I would recommend is, or for next year, if you want to fund the P C B I C request, that you reduce the incentives line item within the Economic Catalyst Fund by fifty thousand dollars and add that to the P C B I C allocation line item.
All right, you heard the recommendation from the manager. Everyone in agreement?
That works.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so let's, any other general questions on the budget before we, I guess, start making some decisions? All right, so let's, any other general questions on the budget before we, I guess, start making some decisions?
Uh, county manager.
Yes.
There's been a lot of discussion in the community about some issues with the jail. And it's, my questions are not meant as any kind of way of, uh, criticizing the sheriff. I'm, I'm just asking the question, are there issues with the jail as far as the facility itself, its design, its maintenance with, with the discussion about? I don't know exactly what the jail inspection may have raised, but are we, are we giving the sheriff's department the tools to meet what they need to do?
They are in an aging facility that has a lot of problems associated with it. So there's ongoing maintenance issues that we're currently addressing with plumbing. Um, so there are, there are a variety of, um, maintenance concerns within that aging facility that we are actively working to address. You'll see a large, um, I mean, a larger addition to their budget to purchase a new stove and oven for the kitchen. So there are things that have just been in place for decades that are starting to need more attention. Um, as far as the, and Ray might can, I see him coming back in, Mike can comment on that as well. Some of the things that are cited in the jail inspection report, like they will occasionally get deemed for, um, the, the rounds that they are making. So that might be due to staffing at that point in time. Or they, and they have a system in place that is supported with technology to stay on top of that. So they're actively working to make sure that system is being utilized. So, um, whenever they receive those inspection reports from the state, they're putting in a plan of corrective action to address anything that's cited. Um, and so they do that, you know, each time something is found, um, when the state visits through their inspection. So it's more of a, it's more maintenance than anything. It might be something sticky that they found on the floor. And so there, there are definitely minor things cited on that report that can be easily rectified. But even what has been cited that might take a little more investment, they've, they're aware of that and are putting in a plan to address it. Ray is here if you want to hear a little bit more specifically about the maintenance of the building.
Are we giving you enough funding is what my, I guess, what my basic question is on the facility?
Well, the, best way to phrase it, this building was built in nineteen ninety-three and it is basically not structurally, but otherwise falling apart. Not to, you know, be slang about it, but, you know, we've replaced the chilling system. We replaced the chiller, we replaced both boilers, uh, we replaced the water heaters. Uh, we've converted the, uh, the HVA system from digital, from pneumatic to digital. Uh, right now, the biggest issue we're having up there is the water pipes. I, and I have to assume it's due to city water and the chlorine in the water. It's just eating the pipes apart up there. They've been there long enough and, you know, right now, we're just constantly having pipes fail. Uh, we put in two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in CIP requests this year to address one pod, thinking that we could start one by one and work our way through it. But, uh, and we've, uh, every day or every, you know, several times every week, we're having, uh, water failures or water leaks up there due to pipes just deteriorating. So, yes, we're plugging away at it, but, but yes, you can expect to spend a whole lot more money up there. I mean, that building is, I guess you could say, other than structure, it's lived its life. I mean, it's been there for, what, ninety-three to now and, and things are beginning to fail. And it's not, uh, I haven't seen an end to the, to the means right now. I think we're gonna continue to put a lot of money in it over the next few years to try to maintain and to get it where it needs to be.
You'll get a tour of that too.
Do what?
You'll get a fun tour of that too.
Yeah, so it's, uh, so yes, uh, I haven't been denied any requests for it. So they, y'all been good about addressing it, but there's no way I can address it all at one time. So we're just trying to pick, pick our way through it and, and make, uh, make a constructive, uh, move to making it better.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I've also had some, uh, concerns from citizens about, I guess, the cause and effect of the, the medical expense that we've had. We, we know what the effect is. It was a nine hundred thousand dollars surprise we had. But have we figured out what the cause is and a way to eliminate or partially eliminate? I know it's a difficult.
It is. The sheriff has been very proactive in implementing a program, once he learned about it, through the Affordable Care Act to where we are enrolling any inmate who is coming into the jail into the Affordable Care Act program so that they receive health insurance that is covering medical expenses while they're in the jail. Doesn't go into effect until the first of the month. So if they come in on the second, then we are subject to those expenses in the first month. But the effect that being in that program is having is it is reducing the medical expenses overall that we're responsible for as a county. It is also having the effect of getting our inmates returned back more quickly, um, when they are seeking medical care. It is also, um, there's a concerted effort to, um, that, there's just, they're, they're putting more tools in place to really determine what's going on and whether they need to be transported or, you know, whether they can receive care on-site. So that is reducing, that medical plan is greatly reducing our medical expenses, but they are taking some other steps as well. One thing the budget does include is an increase in that line item just in case, as a buffer for some of those unexpected expenses, um, in that first month. And also an expansion of the on-site healthcare that we're providing through our contract, um, with Southern Health Partners. So a nurse would be on-site twelve hours a day, seven days a week. So currently, it's more of a business hours type, um, operation where they're there in the morning through, um, the evening. But now they will stay all the way till seven PM. So there will be a greater level of service provided that will help with, um, administering medication as well. Um, that will be provided by the, the nurse in the morning and the evening. So I think that they've implemented a program where we're already seeing a significant difference in the bills that are coming in because of the, um, healthcare coverage that they're receiving. And I will also note that we had one particular inmate who drove up those bills really high over a period of time. So that is no longer, um, a problem within the jail.
Well, I know it's, it isn't just our jail, it, it's all over, all, all jails in, in this town.
It is, it's not just us.
It's not just unique to Person County at all. I mean, if you read the news or watch the news, you can see that.
Right.
But when these inmates come in and they lose their services, is that, are they losing the services because of a mandate from the federal government? Or is it something from our general assembly that needs to be addressed that we can?
So some who are coming into the jail have private insurance and that continues. But that's a very small percentage of our jail population. Some are uninsured, so they can then get coverage through enrolling through the Affordable Care Act. And then many are on Medicaid. And so I'm not familiar enough with citing that. Um, and I don't know if anybody else in the room is, you know, as far as where that coverage begins and ends in the incarceration process. But they're not covered, like they were not, Medicaid would not pay for those expenses.
And I know I learned, um, I attended a session at NACO conference where it is across the nation, where, um, there's a push for, and as you stated, it's not only happening in counties here in North Carolina, but it's happening in, across the nation as well, where they're pushing for Medicaid to continue. Um, and again, we know that we're responsible for those medical costs until the inmate is, is moved to the state. So there, um, is a push for Medicaid to continue until then where the state will actually take over, where the county doesn't have to eat the cost that we are doing right now.
And at our most recent, um, board meeting of the association, the county commissioner is our guest speaker. Cause I think he's the deputy secretary of, um, DHHS. And I, I raised that question and he said that they have changed the policy where it will continue, I think, for seventy-two hours, maybe. Um, so the challenge is you have the gap there where, let's say, somebody comes in on the tenth of the month, um, and they, they might have that three-day period, grace period, and trying to get them enrolled in the Affordable Care Act. But if anybody who might be self-employed or whatever tried to enroll through that, it starts on the first of the month of the next. So if they're there on the tenth, their coverage doesn't start to the first of the next month. They're there with a drug addiction and they're going through withdrawals that, you know, that first few days or couple of weeks is when the, um, medical needs are likely to surface. So there's still that, that.
It is.
I don't know what the solution is other than maybe the nurse. So it seems like they're approaching it from various angles.
They are.
All right, any further questions? All right, let's, all right, let's rewind here and we're starting off at the top regarding the positions. Is there any adjustment to the, the recommended positions?
Well, I guess I would go to that, um, money we found with raising the percentage, collection percentage to ninety-eight point five. So what is the intent with that? Are we gonna take that and try to?
That's, I mean, I'm in favor of raising it to ninety-eight point five. If everyone's in favor of that, we, we've heard from the tax assessor, we're already over ninety-nine percent. So I think it's fair, is everyone in agreement to, to raise it to, um, ninety-nine point, uh, ninety-eight point five?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So if we do that, then we get four hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred seventy dollars.
Yes.
Do we then want to try to find, um, two hundred ninety-eight thousand and lower a penny? Or do we want to take that four sixty-four and?
I would like to see if we could lower, uh, lower the rate on it. Now, you have, um, now the, the, the PCBIC, that offset because that, that was a wash with coming from the Catalyst Fund. And so, but I guess my question is, uh, so let's go ahead and add the four sixty-four, one seventy-one into, into the, um, into the, uh, budget as the revenue. Okay.
I do want to let you know I had to adjust the sheriff's overtime budget for benefits that go along.
Yes, ma'am. So we're at, uh, so running total four sixty-four, four seventy-one. And you have minus the overtime for the sheriff's budget. I'm trying to look, see what figure we're at right now.
Yeah, I can't see that at all for the layer.
So.
So you're at four sixty-one, four seventy-one. I can reduce fund balance by the three thousand, eight sixty-two, which would just shift that number a little bit.
Go ahead and reduce that and then, yeah. Then you have about four hundred sixty-one thousand dollars of it.
Four hundred sixty-one thousand, what's the penny on the tax rate again?
Seventy-five, seven.
About seven hundred sixty thousand.
Seven fifty-nine, two thirty-six.
Seven.
Seven fifty-nine, two thirty-six.
And I think that changes slightly as the tax, the collection rate changes. So we're not gonna be able to probably get it to the penny in the discussion today, but these will be rough, um, numbers.
Tom.
Going in the right direction.
Um, looking at your budget with your revenues, I believe it was about a twenty-three percent increase. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, are you good, do you think you, are you conservative with those numbers or are you?
We are conservative. Uh, our, our revenue comes from what we collect on transport.
I understand.
So our rates went up, but also the reimbursement rates have gone up as well. And quite honestly, we have more people on insurance, so that, that increases our rate.
Okay. You comfortable with increasing that by twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. So add twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue from EMS.
I also want to point out that a lot of the fees and the fee schedule were unchanged. So some places are raising taxes and increasing fee assessments. So that's one thing that we are not doing.
Yeah, the, the main one that we did discuss through the process is the recreation and parks fees. Um, basi, mainly for athletics programs because the cost for the officials and the uniforms, we're seeing substantial increases in that and you'll see increases in those expenditure line items. So they will make some adjustments to those fees, um, for those programs to cover some of those additional expenses that the county is seeing. And those are determined on a case-by-case basis, based on each program.
All right, so we're down to two hundred seventy-three thousand. All right. I'd like to see the interest earnings increased to one point two from one point one. Is everyone comfortable with that?
You're the banker.
Well, I think that, that's, I think she, I think the, the finance director is accurate with it being decreased, but I think that is, um, I can live with that number.
Is it one seventy-three what?
So we're down to one seventy-three, three seventy-one. The animal control officer position, total cost of that county, one sixty-seven, one ninety-seven, is that correct?
Yes. And that's because there's a vehicle, a one-time, yeah, one-time expense related to a vehicle in that position.
Just, I'm not suggesting this, but just letting the board, there's the rest for you to get to that penny. I said, that position, if that position is, um, taken away, that gives you the full penny to get us to sixty-three cents. Unless we want to look elsewhere. All right. Is there any other un?
Do you have any suggestions?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Asking if she has any suggestions.
Yes, so this was, we're all thinking on the same page here. Any suggestions where we had some conservative revenue figures that could be tweaked?
I don't know of any off the top of my head. Do you know, Tracy?
So we were talking about, um, workspace and DSS. You're saying they're out of space and we're adding pretty much a new unit.
Mm-hmm.
So where would that be housed or what that number of people?
Sure, so we've drawn up some preliminary plans to expand into the back of Freedom Houses space. So my understanding is they've already, due to a prior conversation with them, they've already moved kind of out of that space towards the front because they were not using it all. So, you know, we did not really want to piecemeal it. Once we bought the building and we were trying to get a more comprehensive look at the space. And like I said, we've had other needs that needed to be addressed first. Um, we now may be able to utilize some of the space downstairs in this building, in the USDA offices, because they only have two people working out of a pretty large space right now. So we have identified some other areas for being able to create space for a new unit. We just need to have those conversations with the occupants of those spaces again.
And I was about to repeat the previous question about, is there anywhere else? Because I, um, envisioning the animal, um, shelter and talking with staff there, you know, I'm in favor of this position. So, you know, um, again, I'm like, where else could we look? So, um, repeating your question pretty much.
Yes.
Again, even though it's gonna give the same answer, but, um.
I mean, it, it may be possible to cut out one of the other vehicles. Oh, I have that listed from me at the moment. I mean, let me see.
As we did, if I'm remembering correctly, you'd said that you had added additional vehicles to this, um, fiscal year? Like the amount that you're ordering or is listed here covers the requests by all of the, all of the departments and you've added a couple, two or three, if that's what I heard.
So the sheriff's office requested eight, social services requested five, and we do have some offsetting revenues. The state pays for about fifty percent of their vehicles, so there's not as much savings for that. Then we have the one truck in general services, the animal services includes the supervisor truck, and then a replacement vehicle, I believe, Tracy. And then the two in-person industries. I just don't remember the specifics of that and the priorities of those vehicles. Just trying to find a trade-off. For animal control or animal services, like at the shelter? So at the shelter, I believe there's four full-time staff, is that four full-time staff? And then there's two animal control officers that have been in the sheriff's office that will move back.
I guess it's just hard for me to, like, we talked about before, they were there before. Without this other position, um, I know Tom's need, I know the sheriff's need, and they both ask it, ask for positions. How's your staffing, Tom, percentage-wise? Do you have trouble feeling yours or?
So currently, we have four vacancies. We have three paramedic vacancies and we have a mobile integrated healthcare advanced practitioner vacancy, which we've advertised for. We're getting ready to do the hiring process for that. We're three paramedics down currently, but otherwise our staffing is actually pretty good.
Orages for a supervisor position.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
That's really apples to oranges for a supervisor position anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I attended a, um, town hall in northern Durham County about the rail jail, the Bahamut Club, and they had the Durham County Sheriff there to speak. And, uh, overall, they are twenty-five percent down across the board, um, short. And that's including JON, patrol and all across the sheriff's department. So we're fortunate that we don't have that. So I feel like if we were able to get that position, they could fill it. And that's just, um, what I'm trying to balance with.
You're talking about the assistant chief position.
Well, he had a supervisor position, I think.
It's a key assistant chief position, yes, ma'am.
Right. And then sheriff had asked for two positions outside of the animal control. So it's.
So what are we looking for? What amount of money are we looking for?
You are looking for a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars.
What percent of the total budget is that? Reduce the total budget by a fraction of that, whatever percent that comes out to and let the department heads decide where they wanna make their reductions or adjustments.
That's not easy.
Yeah, that's not easy. That's not, let me ask a, a real quick question. No, thank you. The solid waste hose fees, the, we received, so you received, we budgeted last year eight hundred eighty thousand, we got nine hundred eighty-six thousand. Now we budgeted for nine hundred thousand. Are we anticipating receiving more than that?
So we're budgeting slightly higher. I think finance would have analyzed that, so I don't know.
But I'm, I'm just looking at the actual right now and.
We'll look it up and see.
Solid waste, I mean, that's, that's.
It's also, just wanna confirm what we're doing right now. So it sounds like what your objective is, is to make budget adjustments that bring the tax rate to sixty-three cents. That's what you're doing now.
Yes, ma'am.
So we may want to just go ahead and put up a negative seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars up there for tracking purposes. So it's a little more clear on the spreadsheet what you're working through. Because right now, the way it looks, you could fund the two positions in the sheriff's office and emergency services, but because you're showing a surplus of five hundred eighty-five thousand. But if the objective is to eliminate that one penny, then we'll go ahead and get that up on the spreadsheet too, for discussion purposes.
And you were gonna give me an ex- um, explanation of why the hose fees were higher than anticipated? Okay, thank you, ma'am. I, I know you're, you're doing multiple things at the same time.
So right now, we've collected seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year of the eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. But I need to see when the last payment came in.
It came in yesterday.
So there was an incentives payment that didn't go out this year in about the amount of hundred seventy thousand. Has that already been added back for next year into the?
And so that's within the Economic Catalyst Fund, so that's separate from the General Fund. But yes, that all remains within the Economic Catalyst Fund. So whatever was not funded in this year or spent in this year goes into fund balance. And we budgeted to allocate fund balance to support next year's budget for Economic Catalyst. And then there will still be fund balance remaining that could be used once everything's accounted for through the audit.
I can probably give you fifty thousand dollars for this fee.
Alright, fifty, fifty thousand dollars increase from solid waste hose fees? Alright, that puts us at?
One twenty-three, six point six.
One twenty-three. Let me ask a question, not just going back to that, that position with, uh, animal services. The operating cost was the vehicle eighty-nine thousand?
Not completely. Um, some of it is equipment, I believe. And I'm looking at Sonia too. I can pull up some more detail. I just haven't, let me see if I can find that on my computer.
Would you consider funding the position that, starting in January, for half-year? Salary and benefit wise, that would save you thirty-eight thousand, eight thirty-eight.
Board?
What'd she say, thirty-one, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight thousand.
I just go back to, I think it is a nice to have, but it's hard to, it's hard to not fund first responder positions that have been requested. Um, or to, to cut those and not this one.
How much? Do you have that for, um, the first responders? Like how much?
We didn't get a dollar amount for those 'cause they weren't recommended, right?
They were not recommended. Um, they were, they're on the spreadsheet, the one-on-one, um, budget document, so I can refer back to that. So the amount provided there for the assistant chief of EMS, and that was for a nine-month period. So that would be starting October first. That was funding it for nine months of the year. The total was a hundred three thousand nine thirty-seven because they have a vehicle that could be used for that position. So that's salary and benefits and, um, additional costs in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars for equipment and supplies associated with that position. So that's a total of one oh three, nine thirty-seven. For the sheriff's office positions, the warrant position was one hundred sixty thousand, two sixteen, and that does include a, a new vehicle, an additional new vehicle for that position. And the deputy special assignment county resource officer totaled a hundred and sixty-four thousand, two oh three. That also includes a new vehicle for that position.
Board? Alright. I'll be, I'll pull the Band-Aid off. She's not, she's not.
I mean, I'll let some other people speak.
I'm sorry?
I've talked about it a few times, so I'll let other commissioners.
No, I was, was thinking in my mind, like, you know, even with what, uh, Tracy was saying. So it's, that is not an option for any of the other positions. What you had said for, um, the animal services position.
It is an option for anything that the board wants to do. It's just a suggestion. Sometimes due to hiring delays, we don't fund the position for the whole year. And, and that helps alleviate the strain of the budget.
Let's say, so the.
Thank you.
It'll be there next year. Alright, so you got what give, if you do all the positions, one, two, three, four, on the eight, on the the seven positions and have those seven positions start at half a year, what, what does that give us?
So we would need to go back and rework, um, well, I guess the revenues, there would be a direct. So total county cost for the seven new positions is projected to be at, is budgeted at
Four eighty-six, two thousand seven.
So a hundred and twenty-seven of that is one-time cost. So you really need to look at, uh, the difference there. So, so yeah, and some of that is offset with revenue. So, I mean, you're looking at roughly half, but it's not directly half. We'd have to go back in and reevaluate that.
So we're taking out the one, taking out the one twenty-six there.
Well, it's not really a one-time cost because it increases the fleet, increases the maintenance and you gotta replace them.
Right, but the purchase of like desks and computers, that's built into the one-time cost. And the vehicle purchase, I mean, the bulk of that is in the first year.
Alright. So I just, I took out the one twenty-seven operating cost at it and, um, from that four eighty-six, halved it by two, half a year. That gave us, um, right at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five seventy. And what number do we need?
One twenty-three, six twenty-seven.
No, what, one twenty-three, okay, so you get, you took out fifty there. And the fifty came from these hose fees on that, so.
It's not gonna be that simple to figure because there's offset revenue for all the DSS fee employees.
Okay. Alright, so if we take one, ease, alright, we start animal control off half a year, that's thirty-eight thousand dollars.
I guess that would be a negative thirty-eight, yeah, okay.
But it's allocated, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So what's the amount now? Eighty-four?
Mm-hmm, yes.
What do we have scheduled for contingency this year?
I think it's at one forty, let me see. Yes, one forty for undesignated contingent. Well, this year it's at a hundred. For fiscal year twenty-six, it's one forty.
Alright, I'll make a recommendation. We can always change that number, the contingency as time goes by. Recommend that we take four, um, four hundred and eighty, eighty-four thousand, seven eighty-nine out of contingency budgeted for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And lower the property tax rate to sixty-three cents. All positions are funded. Ex, um, uh, the animal control supervisor will start mid-year through the budget year. And so, is everyone okay with that?
My preference would be to remove that position. It can happen for six months then, you know. And I just struggle with cutting those first responder requests, um, and adding this when those positions were with the department before without this. But that's just my opinion.
I'd like to cut the rate to sixty-three, but I'm, I would rather not fund some of these positions. Because it's gonna, it's gonna be reoccurring next year. You're gonna have to deal with it next year.
So when you say the positions, are you talking about the animal control?
Animal control, person industries, EMS assistant chief, and probably the sheriff for office warrant, squad person. That may get you to where you need to be.
There, the EMS and sheriff's office are not in the budget. So it's person industries, the maintenance position, the animal control supervisor, and then there are five positions for social services.
And that was already reduced from fourteen requested.
Alright, if you have a desire to make a motion for any adjustments on the, on the position, um, aspect of it, please feel free to do so.
I'm not agreeing with what you just proposed.
With what, the contingency?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Let's pause on the contingency for right, for right now. Sounds like we, someone wants to do something. And so Animal Control... Uh, Animal Control, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand one ninety-seven. That would definitely get us back into the sixty-three, sixty-three cent range on it. And, and I have to do all this wiggling, so I will make a motion to eliminate that position. Any questions?
Sixty-three cent contingency stays like it is.
Content, leave contingency the same.
That's your motion?
That's my motion. All right. All in favor of the motion of removing the Animal Control Supervisor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, four to one. All right, so with that, what does that give us if we leave the contingency alone?
You're forty-three thousand five hundred and seventy to the good.
Forty-three thousand five seventy to the good, okay. Well, that's a round number that...
You could reduce the fund balance appropriation by the balance.
Okay, all right, reduce fund base appreciation. Everyone agree with that?
What does that screen do?
I've never actually used that screen.
It's, it's there to make the room look important.
I'm sure.
All right, so we get, so we have any other concerns, any other questions? All right. Having here none, I will entertain a motion to instruct staff to prepare a budget ordinance for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six regarding, uh, reflecting the changes in effectively lowering the tax rate to sixty-three cents per a hundred dollar. Do I have such a motion? We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion's been approved for, um, the budget ordinance to be presented to us at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so Budget Rook Session Monday will no longer be needed.
Okay, we'll take that off the calendar.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is Preston County Organizational Chart. County Manager?
Yes, IT, could you please load the slides? We had a brief, um, discussion at the org chart during the Manager's Recommended Budget Presentation. And I brought back a proposed revision based on that discussion. So the two, oh, and I need the clicker, just a second. So we did view both of these, um, org charts during the, uh, presentation. So you have the current org chart for the county on the left. You have the School of Governments, just representation of county government and all of the inner, uh, related components of that at the state level and local level on the, uh, right side. So the suggested revisions were to change the citizens of Person County to be the voters of Person County at the top of the org chart. And then to add, um, the advisory boards to the org charts, or to the county org chart. So this revised version includes voters at the top. And then it adds the advisory boards that are appointed by the Board of Commissioners in a block to the right to represent that relationship to the Board of Commissioners. So welcome any feedback on this proposed revision.
Can you flip back to the other one real quick?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to see if the, um, the other governing board were on, highlighted in blue on that one. Okay.
I guess when thinking about this, and I get the voters piece of it where the voters have elected those in green. But then the more I look at it, you're also with that organizational chart, looking at each of these departments who are also serving people who are not yet voters. And I wanna make sure they feel included because you have a growing number of young people who are becoming more involved and wanna know more about government, um, politics, um, and community. And it has, um, a couple have approached me, it's like, so where do we lie in this? Because right now they feel like they're excluded until they're the eighteen and able to vote. And we just wanna make sure that we're encompassing everyone who lives here in Person County, not only those that age to vote. But I do get that with the organizational chart, the voters do choose their community leaders. And then you have those that fall under. But wanna make sure we're, you know, as kids we're getting to ask questions, older children who understand. Um, and that was posed to me, like, where do they, where do we fall in this? Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, um, to my colleagues as well, um, with this, so. Because they're beginning to start team, like, political groups. And they're saying it looks like they don't really have a voice with anything, so I don't know.
Well, it's definitely not meant to disenfranchise any group. And I think it's an opportunity to say, this is how your leaders are selected. And so it's important for you at any age to be engaged, um, you know, to follow, uh, to develop your ideas about, um, what you think makes strong government. Pay attention during election cycles to see who represents your values. And make sure that you come out and express your views through voting, um, at the appropriate time. So it's, to me, I requested this because it's meant to streamline and make more efficient and help us to show that, um, we're not casting a vision up here of ours. It's what we were elected by the majority, um, of the voters to do. So we are carrying out the will of the people. And, um, hopefully, parents are helping to shape and represent the views of the, of the next generation and share those values and views when they go and vote. And it's just to provide structure that, yes, as part of the elected body, we wanna see customer service-oriented departments. And recognize that you're here to serve the voters, the taxpayers, the citizens. But just to say, how do we get, how do we get here to make these decisions? Um, so that we can also remember that we're representing an ideology that we said we would bring to this table. Um, and so I just think that helps, you know, keep things efficient and that's my reason. And then, um, it was brought up at our last EDC meeting that there was confusion of that board about what their role is, what their authority is. Um, and they asked that this should be included on the org chart, presumably without knowing I had asked, um, at our last meeting, um, coincidentally.
I don't think it's meant to disenfranchise anybody either. I think it's driving home the, the main idea that as a citizen, a non-participating citizen, you don't affect any of this. You've got to register to vote, and then you have to come out and vote. And that's how you affect all of these things on this chart. You can be a registered voter, just like you can have a set of car keys, but if you don't have to put them in the ignition to drive the car, you're not a driver. So you gotta vote. I think that's what it's driving home, is you gotta be a voter.
And I also think, you know, we have people who, from time to time, have special interests. And they come to public comment and express those interests, and that's fine and good. But if they don't see it, those, you know, take shape from this board, then it's probably because it's out of sync with what we feel our voter base, you know, wants. And so they can understand that, well, the next step for them is, in the next election cycle, make sure you ask people running for office if they would support this, if they stand for this, if their views align with this, and then you know, um, or run for office themselves on that platform. And, you know, that's how we can truly find out, to me, the way, the way our system is structured, um, if it's really what the community wants. Because I, it's really important to me to represent the silent majority that, um, you know, is outgoing about life, contributing to the county in various ways, but maybe not by engaging in politics.
Board members, I'm not trying to interrupt the conversation. Is everyone, we've been going at about two and a half. Does anyone need a five-minute break?
I won't turn it down.
Okay. We're in recess for, I'll make, um, recess until eleven forty. Okay.
.................................... And I just made the comment in that meeting that I had just requested that be added to our org chart. So I think that was coincidental, but, um, you know, reinforces the need.
So what is everyone's thoughts around the chart? Any changes, suggestions? Well, one thing that I thought about, and I just want to gather everyone's opinion, is to revisit something that I probably talked about ten, twelve years ago. Around EDC was how EDC, when E, when EDC was, um, created in nineteen eighty-five, the actual EDC board ran EDC. And the EDC director reported to the EDC board. Over time, that, that did change to where it fell under the, the county manager on it. I'm just throwing, throwing that out there if, um, if that is of interest to this board to look into.
Well, I'd like to add that that was a very successful model they had. As a matter of fact, I think Governor Hunt was governor then, and he, he highlighted our program. And I think he said Glenn and Jim around the state of North Carolina making presentations to economic development groups in all the towns, or a lot of towns, talking about our, our success and how it was modeled. And then we've gotten away from that.
Mm-hmm.
But they were very successful. A lot of industry came to Roxboro during that period of time, so it worked well. And I guess a lot of other EDCs must have taken it to heart because I keep reading where a lot of, a lot of companies are going to other places instead of Person County, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, I thought it was a very successful model.
I have reflected on that, that time a lot. Um, you know, I wrote an article about Jean Andrews for HICA magazine, uh, probably about a year ago. And she shared with me the books that, all the plans they did, and they were developing all these industrial parks, um, around that time in the county. Um, that's when they got the private sector to build Powell's Point. So there was a lot of development going on then, and a lot of input from the, the community through those committees and boards.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're at another pivotal time where we're starting somewhat from scratch with needing to develop product. And that board has got a lot of years working together, a lot of years of experience, many of them, um, going back close to that time.
Mm-hmm. Um, I was, like I said, it was a suggestion and, and, you know, at the time I brought it up, the board at that time was not in favor of moving forward with, with the, it could have, it could be done. They just chose to keep it, um, um, under the, under the county manager. But I think it, you know, it gives EDC more teeth. Um, it gives them, you know, yes, it's the volunteer situation. That's, that's the position, it's volunteer. But you look back, as you call back in the eighties and nineties, you had some very significant individuals, community leaders. And everyone on that EDC board, I consider a community leader, so no reflection on the previous boards to the current board at all. But you had stakeholders and, um, and, you know, the big thing is to have communication. You know, when Jim Stovall ran, um, uh, EDC and yet, at the time Glenn Newsom was the EDC director. I mean, that was, you know, a, um, excellent tag team on it. And kind of like to see, get back, get back to that point, not, not saying anything negative about the current format. But I think the, uh, the, a more modified format from the past would be effective with, with EDC since, you know, we're starting from the, I mean, we've sold the mega site, mega site's gone. Look at potential projects, but it just gives, I think, EDC more, more stake in the game, more responsibility with that, with, uh, with, um, the director reporting, um, uh, reporting directly to the, the EDC commission itself.
I would agree.
It allows them to be more proactive.
Mm-hmm. Antoine Nada, what are your thoughts?
Same here in doing a timeframe, like Person County, I'll be honest, I was a lot younger, but, you know. It was booming, like this used to be a place where you had industry and everything, and you were talking about that timeframe and the things that we had here. It was a successful, um, community. And, um, I would like to, I think all of us up here for a reason to get it back, um, to where, um, you know, things here were, we had industry, we had companies here, we had businesses. So I agree with that as well.
So I guess, it sounds like everyone's in agreement. How would we modify this, this flow chart?
You would, you would have the Economic Development Director reporting to the Economic Development Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Would that not be right?
Well, I guess it would look like one of these, um...
Well, we report, the EDC reports to us.
Correct.
We appoint EDC. So I guess you would have, you know, you have board directors, you have advisory boards. I would probably have, maybe have EDC or Arrow have EDC beside the Board of Commissioners and have a, um, Director under EDC.
Right, Economic Development under EDC.
Well, I guess it would function similar to those other governing boards where the Director would report to the EDC and then the staff would report to the Director.
So as it stands right now, County Manager, I know the Health Department Director reports to the Health Board.
Right. So it looks similar. It's not the exact same situation, but similar to what you see in those blue boxes on the org chart. Where, um, the Board of Elections, Cindy Jacobs, as the Elections Director is selected and reports to the Board of Elections. It's a swollen water, I mean, there's the relationship with the, the board there, which is similar, they're elected. And then Cooperative Extension, of course, is, we actually contract. So it's, each one of those blue boxes is a slightly different iteration, but it is something similar. Um, before moving forward with this, we would need to relook at the EDC bylaws, and those would need to be revised. And we would just need to consider any other legal implications for this. And, um, you know, what, what that will look like organizationally moving forward. So we could come back to you in the next, um, month or two with a report on that. I mean, you can set the timeline where you would like to see us come back. I can work with the attorney on that.
What, what does the timeline, does the board would like to see?
It'd be third Tuesday of each month. No, it's the fourth Tuesday of each month, is that correct?
Fourth Tuesday. So it'll be the twenty-fourth of June.
Twenty-fourth of June.
This would definitely be, uh, uh, reevaluating how the department is structured, how it's running, what the reporting relationships look like, what's expected from the EDC. So that all of that is clearly communicated, um, if we're to make this change.
Okay. Well, I think, it sounds like the board's in full agreement with moving forward, um, with the modification of it. So they meet on the twenty-fourth, receive input feedback from EDC, and have this scheduled for only meeting in July?
Which is the twenty-first, right?
Yes.
Yeah, then they'll have their next meeting on the twenty-second, the next day?
The, the next day, but they had already met for June?
Right.
Okay. So, um, uh, as you said, look into it and, uh, we will, um, uh, talk to EDC when they meet on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Make, let them know what we're, um, discussing and, and so that we can make a, uh, a decision on the, the twenty-first of July.
Okay.
Okay. Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Long, you look like, do you want to say something?
Do we want to address the Department of Social Services at all? You know, I was formerly on the board. I, I did, I was two terms on that board. I resigned in the middle of my second term, but I was Vice Chairman of that board. But I also served as a State Director on the County Association of Boards of Social Service.
Mm-hmm.
And there had been, there had been, there has been many counties that have went away from a Board of Social Services. And done something similar to what we've done here in Person County, but I think almost in every instance that I'm aware of, they all moved back and put a Board of Social Service back in place. Is that, is that the way you understand, Aunt Nana?
Okay.
I'm just asking, is that something we want to consider?
Well, that's, I mean, that's the first, um, that, that, you...
So it would be an advisory committee under this structure. So it's not a DSS board as defined statutorily, but what you have the option of doing as you still remain, um, the Consolidated Human Services Board, if I'm remembering correctly. But then there's an additional layer, so you still have the statutory responsibilities as the Consolidated Human Services Board, if you keep that model. But you can add, um, the Advisory Board as a layer, Human Services Advisory Board. It's been a while since we've looked at this, so I'd have to go back and, um, reexamine those details. But that does allow you the opportunity to appoint citizens to advise you as the Consolidated Human Services Board.
What would be the disadvantages of going back to the system that we had before there was a consolidated?
We had trouble getting off members, I mean, we had trouble getting looking for a board, boy, board.
I think, I guess, one problem.
You had the DSS board who had the authority over the department. So Social Services was a standalone department, it's now combined or consolidated with Veteran Services. So you had the Social Services Board who had the responsibility for that department. And all of the employees were part of the state human resources system. So they have now been, um, they now fall under the umbrella of the county personnel system. So they are now considered within the county employee structure rather than the state human resources system. And so the department now directly reports up through the Assistant Manager to the County Manager, to the Board of Commissioners. Versus the previous, um, way it was structured where the Social Services Director reported directly to the DSS board.
Can we also look at what that Advisory Board makeup would look like? Whether there'd be a Commissioner representative and, um, how big do, are they usually, are there standard stakeholder positions that typically fill them?
Yeah. We can come back to y'all's information on that as well.
I think it would be beneficial to have an advise, in this instance, um, if that's the option, Advisory Committee. Um, I don't want to call it a buffer, meaning like, you know, we don't want to talk with and, um, you know, meet with the community. But with the services offered, it, Social Services and what they do in certain situations, I just feel like a lot is being politicized. Because we are here where it shouldn't be, um, but, you know, we're elected officials, so it kind of automatically makes it that. And I think, you know, we need something in between DSS and straight, you know, I know you all are there, but I'm saying like another committee or something in between that agency and us.
How many counties have the current model that we're under now versus what we were before in North Carolina?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to, I haven't looked at that in the past year. So there's a dashboard that captures that information, so we could go back and refer to that to give you an update.
I don't think there's anything that's on the side for you today.
All right. Any other further discussion? Haven't hearing none and no further business to discuss, uh we'll.
We do have the strategic.
Oh, I am sorry, I am sorry. This is what I get for taking the agenda.
So yeah, if y'all um.
Are we adopting this org chart, are we waiting to see if we're gonna switch up that Advisory Board?
Well, I mean, we've modified the, we've the flow chart.
You've modified the Economic Development.
Yeah, we modified, and so we need to, I think before we approve the official flow chart, we need to have that set in stone with with the changes on it and modify it after that, if everyone's in agreement with that.
So I would suggest if you would like to move forward with the changes related to voters and Advisory Boards, that we include this version of the org chart in the approved budget. And then it sounds like it will be July when you revisit the EDC and the Consolidated Human Services Board.
Okay.
And so we can, you know, uh cha- revise the org chart when those decisions are made. But since those are pending, you know, this this version is what we could include um in the budget document. If if y'all would like to see these changes made to it.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the organizational chart as presented on the screen.
All right, we have a motion, any discussion? Haven't hearing none, all in pair of vote was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, as have, motion's approved.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Adam D. Go ahead.
No, sorry, go ahead.
No. Twenty-five, twenty-seven, Strategic Plan Update.
Okay, so we put this strategic plan in place um at the beginning of this fiscal year and it was intended to span over a two-year period. Um there is the ability to make some modifications along the way. And Commissioner Wilburn had suggested some revisions, so I have included those in your packet. You did see those a few months ago and I haven't received any other um suggestions for revisions. So the first um section that we're looking at is the Mission Vision and Core Values. And the suggested revisions are included. And I'm just gonna offer my commentary on when I was preparing a statement for the last meeting um that I read at the beginning. I had had thought through that and then I went back and looked at um these core values and they really resonated with me in terms of what I had put together um in sharing that message from the county um related to the child who had died. So some of the wording in the core values as they're written um really kind of aligned um with that particular statement. So I'm just sharing from my perspective that I'm I'm very comfortable with the core values. I know the suggested wording in the mission statement is to update facilitating to catalyzing. And that's also um captured in the the opportunity value as a change. Um but then there's also some suggested edits to community and transparency. So community changes from um, we are welcoming, inclusive and accessible, we are family friendly to just uh begin with the we are family friendly part. There's some other slight um suggested rewording in that one too. And then with transparency, it is suggested to change from the end where we put communication as a priority to update that, rather than saying communication is a priority to saying adhering to open government policies and statutes is a priority. So I guess I'm just interested in feedback about whether we move towards the suggested rewording or if we keep some of it the way it is, change some of it, or if there's any other suggestions for revising this page.
Well, we've been talking a lot about the public records requests and and certain group that likes to abuse that. Um and so my reason for changing to adhering to open group policies, government policies and statutes as a priority is because um that's what we're bound to and that's something we can measure and prove that we're doing. And we are adhering to that, and so communication is a priority, it's very subjective. Somebody's always gonna say you didn't communicate with them the way they wanted you to. And um and sometimes I don't think it should be a priority, it just depends on the situation, quite frankly.
Any further discussion?
I'm agreeing with the changes.
So I'm hearing that we're approving this as presented by the manager?
And so that's the first page, there were, I think, two others to look at, so is there any other feedback on that particular one?
Okay, ma'am.
So the next um one is related to the Economic Opportunity and Growth Focus Area. And so there's some rewording suggested um for goal or the objectives associated with Goal Two, so two point two and then adding two point five and also adding one point four under Goal One. So those are the suggestions there that we can incorporate if the Board desires.
Did the Board write this or who who actually came up with this?
So the way the process um worked for the strategic plan is that the Board had a couple of um mini sessions, uh retreats or strategic planning sessions. And then Department Heads also had two um sessions or retreats where we focused on this. So it was kind of a back and forth between the Board providing input and feedback, Department Heads providing input and feedback, and then adopting it um prior to last year's budget process. So I think it was adopted in February of twenty-four to use to guide the fiscal year twenty-five budget process. And then we've reported out on all of these objectives on a quarterly basis as far as progress goes. Um some of these, we've checked the box, they're done, others are ongoing. So this um again was meant to serve in place for a two-year period and then we can go through a more comprehensive process to update it and establish new um goals or even new focus areas in advance of our next budget cycle.
So I see Goal Six, ensure county facilities meet the needs of the public and employees. And then there is the mention of the feasibility study that was done for emergency services. But was it ever modified to do the countywide assessment?
So we have that in the CIP and the uh six point five is Complete Space Needs Study, including ADA accessibility for county facilities, so that's six point five on the strategic plan. And then I think there was one um Goal twelve point two under Service Excellence or Objective twelve point two, which was conduct a community survey, had been recommended uh to remove from the strategic plan.
I remember we discussed, so what, I can't, just refresh my memory, Catherine. Um we had said we would do something else differently or put that off to next year. Um to, since we're talking about, you know, service excellence, um service to the community, but we do want to hear from them. So I can't remember exactly what we had discussed around this.
Right, so there are um firms out there who support communities in doing these community surveys. So they um have them, they have them already tailored for like benchmarking purposes and to um be able to administer, you know, on a consistent basis year after year or, you know, you don't do it every year, but every couple of years and then you can compare your results to the earlier surveys. So there is a cost associated with that. So that, I mean, we could always do one internally, it's not going to have the statistical significance or maybe have the reach that we could have if it's supported by um a professional, you know, entity that does these on a regular basis. So the idea was if we were to conduct a community survey to get feedback from the community, identify, you know, needs that we may not be aware of, um identify what we're doing well, what we could improve. You know, that that would be something that could be funded through the budget process to administer.
My recollection of the discussion was that um you don't get a significant um part of the population to participate in the surveys. I never put a lot of weight in them because I just don't consider it to be representative of the entire community. Um and I'm sure outsourcing it can help do more than somebody who's trying to tack it on to their regular duties. Um I just, I don't know what the end benefit is. And um it's just, it's like when people talk a lot about things on social media, but but they get asked to come to a meeting and they don't come. It's um the actual helpful feedback doesn't seem to make it, make its way through the proper channels. So that was, again, I was the one who asked to remove that, but.
So that covers it.
Okay. You look like you were, you were jotting a few things.
Economic Opportunity and Growth, um three point two.
Okay.
Consolidate Planning Ordinances to a User-Friendly and Up-to-Date UDO.
Strike it.
I'd I'd like to, that would be my recommendation.
So is that providing direction that we do not return to the UDO? Because we talked about that in the previous meeting as far as that is the ultimate goal to adopt a UDO. We're just not moving forward with that right now. I mean, we talked about putting possibly a subcommittee in place to do that. But right now we're moving forward with some of the more immediate um needs for updating the planning ordinance. Ultimately recognizing the benefit of pulling everything together into one.
I'm sorry, what I was proposing last time was that we pull what's helpful out of the UDO and it put it in the ordinances that we already have.
Yes.
And with some Margaret's suggestions that she already had in there. Um but I think it's largely not good the way it is.
Yes, last year I was at a Planning Board meeting. The uh Planning Board Chairperson, everybody on the Board, as I recall, I believe it was unanimous. They all were frustrated with the UDO. And they made a motion to do away with the UDO and go back and take the eight ordinances that we have and to update those ordinances. And that was the direction that they gave the Planning Director at that time. And then about sixty days later, I don't know what happened, but the Planning Board didn't like it. But the Director kept continuing with the UDO. And I've spoken to members on the Planning Board and they would, still would like to continue with the existing eight ordinances that we have instead of continuing on trying to do the new UDO. Everything where it's all compacted into one. It's really easy now with those eight ordinances to look at what you're trying to find instead of going through a big anonymous document. That was obviously working.
We had some um feedback from Margaret, who's our interim Planning Director at the last meeting about um perhaps focusing in on reducing the number. Maybe the UDO does not encompass all of the current ordinances that are in place. But since there is some redundancies and some cross-references that make it a bit difficult and people are seeking to, you know, understand our development regulations, that we still create a UDO, which is pretty common um amongst entities in North Carolina. And that perhaps we keep some standalone ordinances for planning purposes. But that we do ultimately shoot for having a UDO in place that combines some of them. Again, creating one place to go and find um what people are looking for, to help both the public and the staff. But that's not something that we're going to tackle immediately, there's some immediate edits that need to be made.
And I agree with that, I think that it's just been out there for so long, the UDO, everybody's thinking about the draft document that's on the website and that's what I think we want to mostly abandon and start over with the consolidation where it makes sense. Um and update things that might be included in that draft about temporary housing and, you know, including data center because that's not addressed anywhere and as part of the uses. Um and some of that stuff that needs to be updated um for today's industry um and uses. But in terms of going back to that document that took a year, I think that's what we're talking about striking right here.
Let's go back to that subcommittee, because we really never, we gave the idea, we never named who was gonna be on that subcommittee. We we talked about having stakeholders involved. Do we have any individual names that we want to go ahead and start um officially adding people to that that committee? And I, you know, I don't think there uh there's all sorts of stakeholders, so I don't know if you can put, you put a cap on how many involved with it, but um.
Well, we do already have a steering committee established that has seats from various representatives that you could revisit. I mean, you have a structure established if you want to utilize that. Otherwise, I would suggest that you decide that the this charge to that steering committee is over. So we take that off our list of committees, um because there's a Commissioner appointment to that committee we saw on the list we gave you today. And then move towards establishing a subcommittee.
I, you know, I thought that once they presented it to us, that that, I mean, that their, their duties had concluded.
I think it would have, I guess in my mind, it remained until the UDO was adopted, since it was still a work in progress. But I I haven't gone back to look and. No, they're not.
No, no.
I mean, we could reference that because I don't think, I just think that the uh firm didn't follow their steering. So it wasn't that they put forward something that was bad.
The firm tried to model it off of another.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can.
Better City.
Like Charlotte.
Charlotte, yeah.
We can revisit that list, I don't know that we necessarily need to keep that exact group in place because I think some of them stopped attending just out of apathy.
I remember one member at a Planning Board meeting was talking about, we went through all this on the steering committee and we told that entity that whatever the group that we were contracting with, we did not want that included. Wanted it removed and, but it's still, it's still there, they were very frustrated.
But I also think we've already had two really good meetings where there was public comment from stakeholders. And we can go back.
And see who participated in that.
As management, as planning. I'm saying, and and go ahead and make those changes that they suggested before we pulled them into a bunch of meetings. They've already been to two and said what they need to say and it's on YouTube, so why start that over? Um so we can incorporate the feedback we've already gotten from the building community. Um and, you know, the different people that came, Jay Jennings had some very good points, the Barry Hills had good points. And so we can go back to those minutes and see that that's where changes might need to be made. Um and, you know, we can start with a new base, is what I'm saying. And then as we get to um, you know, the part that applies to development, then we can just reach out to the builders that have shown interest. And we don't need to pull in, you know, different stakeholders, we don't need to pull in TDA on that. Um we can just meet with the builders and and I know there's a couple that have expressed interest and reached out during that time.
Okay.
And approach it that way and it won't be so draining on busy people and they don't need to sit in and discuss parts that don't apply to their expertise.
Okay. So I guess my question is what direction, who who's gonna head up? So I guess my question is what direction, who, who's gonna head up reviewing those minutes and those, those meetings and, um, bringing it back to us to, to ma- start making changes on it?
Well, I worked on it for a year.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like you balled in.
So I can bring my notes right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And since, um, Mr. Long is on the, quote, UDO Steering Committee, which, that still does exist, um, would you be willing to assist the, uh, Commissioner Wilburn?
Yes, I would, yes. That'd be great.
All right, thank you.
She and I's been attending meetings for a long time.
Okay.
Right, and I mean, we both interact with the ordinance.
Sure. But I think we're, um, sounds like we're in agreement to just go ahead and eliminate three point two. Everyone? Okay. So, so that has been xed out. Any other questions, concerns regarding the other models?
Well, I realize I came in only, on the, at the eleventh hour, but in private business, I'm accustomed to the, the vision statement being where you wanna go as a business, and county government is a business, whether you wanna recognize it or not. You've got revenue and expenses, and you've got employees, it's a business. But typically, I was always under the, uh, under the understanding that a vision was where you wanted to go, your vision statement, and your mission statement was how you were going to get there, arrive at what your vision is, and then you had a plan that you had to execute. And I don't see anything in this vision talking about economic development. There's a, there's a scant reference to it in the mission about economic growth. But this county is gonna live or die by economic development, and we're right on the cusp of a lot of things getting ready to happen. We're right here beside the Research Triangle Park, we're close to the Triad region, and we're close to the South Central Virginia region. This is all around us, and it's coming here, and if we aren't ready, it's still gonna come. And I just don't see where, I can't believe we weren't even referencing in our vision economic growth and talking about how we're gonna get there.
So you're saying that the vision, you know, if you look at the mission, it does mention economic growth on it?
Yeah, I'm not telling you to change it. I'm just saying, I'm just giving you a general statement. I'm just kinda surprised that it's not in there, that that, I would've thought that would've been one of our first priorities would be economic development, because the more industry that we can get to come here, they're gonna pay taxes, and that's gonna, that's how we're gonna keep reducing the tax rate like we did today from sixty-four to sixty-three, is having more people paying into the same pot, and you have more money where you can lower the rate, or more, more, not more money, but you have, you have more valuation.
Mm-hmm.
And so you can, you can lower your rate because you have more, uh, investment in the, in the county.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I was just kinda surprised.
Well, before we approve it, I mean, what's everyone's thoughts around that?
I think it was alluded to in saying it's a thriving community and a place where people come to work, um, but, you know, if you wanna enhance that in some way to make it more specific.
And I also think the folk, you've got the mission that coincides with that, that speaks to economic growth, and then the focus areas. I mean, the, the first one is economic opportunity and growth, so those are meant to support that vision statement, so that's encompassing of the efforts to promote economic development and what we're seeking to do in that area, too.
Oh, I think that the blue, in the blue box, it was supposed to change facilitate to catalyze to like the, um, mission statement.
Yes, that's noted over to the right.
Okay.
Yeah.
This was the right.
Mm-hmm. So it's in the values, too?
Yeah.
All right. Do you want to amend the vision? No? Okay. Any other, any other changes? Do we need a, uh, approval on this?
Please.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-five to twenty-seven strategic plan?
Same.
All right. Any further discussion? Haven't hearing none, all in favor of vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The plan has been approved. All right. Any updates that you need to give us at this time?
No, I, well, I said no, but then I just wanted to...
'Cause I skipped, I actually skipped over your comments at the last meeting.
So, so in addition to talking about the budget work session, I was also going to share that we had our summer reading kickoff on Monday at the library, so I encourage everyone to come out to the library. Everyone of all ages can sign up for our summer reading program, and, um, it's just a fun way to connect. They're offering activities, um, associated with that program and just a good way to connect to the library and other community members.
Okay. I understand that, I think there was a request from, it hasn't got to us, but from the Veterans Council looking at putting up a monument.
They mentioned it to me. I saw them out there one day at the park, but I have not received anything informed of a...
For emergency, uh, monument for emergency responders?
Right. Yep, they were out there looking at the area and said they were gonna put together a proposal, but I haven't received anything formally.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Haven't hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
All right, I have a motion. All in favor? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting has been adjourned.